I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, April 17th, 12:48 PM. This is the State Board of Education Monthly Meeting. I'm Jennifer Samuelson. And I guess Maureen, if I could start with the roll call? Thank you.
Here. And good afternoon.
Jenna O’Farrell?
Yeah.
Mohammed Joe? Secretary Warner?
Here.
Amy Foley?
Good afternoon.
Alia Wilber? Tom Lovett?
Here.
Lyle Jackson? Was with us. Lyle was here for... Chair Susan.
Here. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Greg Theerin?
I’m here.
And Secretary Zoe Saunders?
Here.
All right. Before we get started, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? Do we have anyone online? All right. So as we often do, I will leave this open for a little bit and we will move on to next items on our agenda and then just circle back. So the next thing is the welcome and introduction of Zoe Saunders, the incoming Secretary of Education. And so I just want to set the table here. On March 22nd, Governor Scott announced his selection of Zoe as our next Secretary of Education. Zoe had impressed the Secretary Search Committee with her demonstrated commitment to improving student outcomes, her skill at leveraging resources to do more with less, and her ability to work collaboratively and think creatively to solve complex issues. At our monthly meeting on November 15th, 2023, the board was unanimous in its decision to include Zoe as one of the three finalists to advance to the governor for his consideration. Since Zoe began her position two days ago, I’ve had the opportunity to work with her on a couple of different issues, and I found her to be engaged, sincere, and a fast learner. It’s an honor to welcome Zoe to our meeting today, and I look forward to working with her. I know that Zoe wanted to spend a couple of minutes just discussing her meeting with the board, and then there will be some time for questions afterward. So with that, I’ll turn it over.
Excellent. Thank you for that introduction. Good afternoon, everyone. I’m delighted to be here. You know, I’m so excited to actually be here in Vermont. This is now my third day in this role, and really looking forward to working with all of you and working with members of our community and educators to really strengthen our education system here in Vermont. I’ve spent my entire career focused on improving student outcomes and creating pathways to post-secondary training and college opportunities and really ensuring great public school options. So I’m very happy to be here. I know that this is a challenging time for the education system in Vermont, and I’m very confident that in working together, we can turn those challenges into opportunities. I’ve had the benefit in the last three days to be kind of orienting myself to the state and being able to build relationships with some of our superintendents. And really, the point of that is to identify ways in which I can really develop a comprehensive listen-and-learn tour. So I’m very excited to develop that and have many opportunities in the coming months to host conversations with our superintendent’s principals, educators, students, and parents to really understand locally the education priorities so that I can best serve and lead in this role for the state of Vermont. So thank you for the welcome, and I look forward to working with you all.
Does anyone have questions or comments for Zoe? All right. It’s a very quiet audience. All right. Well, thank you very much. I will circle back again. Any members of the public? Okay. Sure. RJ Watson, if you have public comment, if you can mute yourself by pressing star six on your phone. Or if you’re just listening, that’s fine too, but if you wish to address the board, you can hit star six. So if there’s no one else, I will move on, circle back again. Okay. So next on the agenda is to approve our meeting minutes from our meeting on March 20th, 2024. If there’s a motion. Move by Tom.
A second.
Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 20th, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay. The motion carries. I will next entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our special meeting on April 11th, 2024. Moved by Tom.
A second.
Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of our special meeting on April 11th, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I think that was unanimous. Please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right. The motion carries. Great. Maureen, I’ll circle back to you again.
Can you hang on one second? I’m getting...
Sure.
I wonder if you need to pull that closer to you?
Oh.
It’s kind of... I don’t know if that’s on.
So are you able to hear us okay?
We’re good.
Okay. Oh.
I told her all said...
Okay. Okay.
Well, they can hear us now, so if you could just check.
Okay. So should I move on? Okay. So next on the agenda are board announcements. I don’t know if members have board announcements. I had a couple. So I was invited to attend the governor’s press conference when he announced his selection of Zoe Saunders as our next Secretary of Education, and I included my... sorry, my remarks that I prepared in the agenda packet. So you have that. I also included in the agenda packet the email exchange that I had with Sue Siglowski from the Vermont School Boards Association. I never received a substantive response from her, so... and I am a member of the school board. I never saw any correction with regard to the number of times during our meetings where not only had I acknowledged the survey that had been very thoughtfully compiled by VSB A, VPA, VSA, and given to the Secretary Search Committee, but I know that the Secretary Search Committee read those comments. They were included in board packet materials for all board members to read, and we did weave those thoughts into our interview questions. So in case there was any concern about that, I just want to let people know that we actually did take those comments very seriously and we’re really, really happy to have that greater input from members of the larger community. So I just wanted to thank them again. Also, Tammy and I testified before the House Education Committee for two reasons. One was regarding the transfer of rulemaking authority on updates to rules pertaining to career tech centers to the Agency of Education. So we spoke with them about that, and we had like a one-slide presentation that has also been included in your packet. And then we were also asked to testify about the idea of a public education task force and what we thought that might look like. So Tammy spent a lot of time in particular really teasing that out, and I don’t know if you want to add anything about it.
Yeah, I think there’s some interest on the part of the legislature and the general public in Vermont to really set a vision for public education in the state, especially sort of in this moment that we’re having, and to bring together a group that sets not just a vision, but also some priorities and a strategic plan for a number of years going forward. And we know that in the state board, one of our charges, it’s right in Title 16, about sort of what our role is, is to sort of serve in that capacity. So we were talking with the House Education Committee and who’s pulling together sort of legislation to think about what that task force would be and authorize it and what the membership would be moving forward. So I’m very encouraged. It sounds like that’s going to move forward, and I expect the state board will have a strong role in helping set that vision.
And then the last... well, okay. Okay. Yep. The last announcement that I have is that Lyle, Jenna, and I will be testifying before Senate Ed tomorrow, again with regard to the Secretary Search process. So I had already testified alone before Senate Ed... oh, I think maybe in January, and included my packet of information that I presented to Senate Ed in prior board materials. I just resubmitted that to Senate Ed. You know, I’d sort of compiled all of that information for them. So we are meeting with them tomorrow to answer more specific questions that they might have about the process. Anything else or questions? All right. Circle back one last time for... Jen? Okay. So Jen, if you wish to address the board, star six to unmute. If you’re just listening, totally fine, but if you’d like to speak to the board, we are here to listen. I will say we will have public comment at the end of our meeting as well, so anyone who is either late coming in or having difficulties will keep some space open at the end of our meeting as well.
Do we hear off of the owl? Like if somebody’s speaking to us, Lyle or the public could be heard, how do we hear that from the owl? Okay. I didn’t know. I just thought I heard some noise happening over there, so I didn’t know what it was. Did you hear it? It was behind us?
He just told me to join the meeting, and my speaker clicked on before I could hear it. So now the team’s meeting. You have Jennifer through my phone.
Got it. Okay. I was like, well, it was trying to hear public. Maybe that was it. Got it.
So, all right. Well, I’m... at this point, I’m going to move on. We just have Gray with us today, so you are the student reporter.
Okay. It’s kind of... I feel like it’s a lull period in the school year. There’s not a lot happening. We’re moving into our final quarter. Add for Gens. All sports seasons are starting, so for me, that’s track. And our first track meet was... what is it? It’s Wednesday today, so it was two days ago. And we have a very big track team, so I’m excited about that for this year. There’s like 23 of us, which is only a lot if you go to for Gens, but it’s a lot for for Gens. So I’m happy with that. And then we had a band concert last night, which is actually going to be our last... it’s all band, so jazz band and middle school and everything combined. And that’s actually going to be the last band concert of the year because the rest of the year is all focused on marching band and our parades that are going to be later in the spring. But chorus will still have concerts to come. And, oh, break is next week for us, but lots of kids... this does not include me, but lots of kids that take German at our school are going to Germany for the next two weeks, so it’s going to be... our school’s going to be at like half-capacity for a while. There’s not going to be a lot of us at for Gens since everyone’s going. And that’s... we have a very strong German program at the school, and I wish I had done German and not Spanish. But that’s okay. It’s... they all have exchange students that they’re linked up with, and so earlier in the year, we had all the German students come here during the fall, and there were like 25 of them that were here for a couple of weeks. And now all of our students are going over to Germany, so that’s cool, and I’m excited for them because that’s most of the people I know. But that’s pretty much it on a direction school level. Our school board is still dealing with the budget, which I know, as we talked about before, lots of school boards are going through. Unfortunately, our vote has failed twice now, which is not great. So we have... we’ve already voted on a proposal for more cuts for our next vote, which will be early May, but it’s very... you know, it’s sort of a tense time in the school right now because a lot of teachers are worried, and you know, a RIF list was sent out, and it’s a lot of people. Because I think at a lot of schools at this point, it’s a lot of people. So I know lots of students and teachers, and it’s a very small community, so everyone knows each other. You know, all the teachers have students, you know? All the teachers have kids, so lots of people are very anxious, I think, at this particular time of the year. So it’s my hope that that gets passed really soon.
Has the teacher contract already been executed? If you know?
No. It’s... we still have more time to do everything. It’s... yeah, it’s... the only thing that’s happened is the RIF notifications, and that’s only if we get later into it. But people are starting to worry, and that’s why we’re trying to do things quickly. I don’t remember all the dates of when everything happens, but they’re sooner than we’d like. So... I think that’s it. Anyone have questions?
Does your Spanish class get to take trips?
Yeah. There’ll be a trip to Puerto Rico next year for our Spanish class. Generally, our Spanish program is a lot smaller than our German program. There was a trip last year to Costa Rica, and I think... so I’ll at least have the opportunity to go.
Questions for Gray? All right. Well, thank you. Okay. Well, this brings us to the first of two exciting parts of our meeting. Actually, we have a lot of exciting parts of our meeting, but this brings us to the anticipated vote of final draft Rule Series 2000, which is our education quality standards. So we have Sarah Buxton with us today, who is the attorney who’s been helping the board both with the updates to the education quality standards as well as updates to Rule Series 2200, which is coming up next on the agenda. And Sarah, I’m not sure how you want to do this since there are some parts that the board needs to discuss and resolve of common language between EQS and 2200, so maybe we should do that first.
Might it be helpful to step back just to clarify where we are in the process?
Sure.
For the public? So the board has a subcommittee or a committee that has been working on the EQS draft. Sarah has been a valuable asset to that work. And last week, as a subcommittee, we voted out a draft unanimously approved after a number of months of work where we had been doing a number of things. First, we responded to public comment, and we received a lot of comment. Second, in this exercise of trying to make sure that we have implementable rules, there was also additional feedback that we received, particularly from our attorney, but also from other stakeholder groups and constituent groups that suggests additional clarifications to the EQS that would help with its implementability. And then the third thing is, to Chair Samuelson’s point, is this exercise of making... of trying to true up, right, our independent school rules and our public school rules to 2200, so to 2000. So that’s what the committee has been doing over the last, I don’t know, six months or so. The committee’s actually been working on this for almost two years. But the last six months, we’ve been focused on that. We did vote them out again unanimously, and I think that’s important for the full board to note, that the committee took in all of this additional work. We spent a lot of time with it, and we did come to an agreement that the version that we voted out was done unanimously. I know that our council has some minor changes that have come up since then. Most of those changes are to just align the two rules, but I just want to be clear sort of where we were as a committee coming out. We had voted that out unanimously, and these are minor changes that we’re going to discuss now to the rule that was approved by the subcommittee. It’s been a lot of process.
Lots of process.
For our listening audience at home. So... but we’re... I will say, and Kim, I’ll call you, and Rich, into this conversation, and Gray, you know, I think our committee is quite pleased with the rule. This is a good rule. It reflects considerable public input and thought, not just by our group, but also the Act I group over the course of several years. And I think we’ve all said along the way, or at least I have a number of times, it’s not a perfect rule, but there’s never a perfect rule, but this is a really good one, right? And we’re really pleased to bring it before the full board for its consideration. Rich, Kim, Gray, did you want to add anything to that?
No. And I think it’s been fortunate to have people engaged all along the process that have helped inform and bring this to a place of both implementability and in capturing the values in essence that were the necessity for opening these rules through Act I of 2019. And I think hopefully those who have been the diverse group of folks involved in the Act I Working Group see and feel as though this is honoring the integrity of their process by our process in trying to keep that integrity and intention and the engagement represented in the rules that we’re finishing off. It’s been long and also probably the most gratifying body of regulation, and I think I’ve served on every regulation committee that we’ve had in the five years I’ve been on this board, so I’m really excited that we’re here.
Rich, Gray, did you...
So this is the first committee I’ve served on on this, and I would say that we would not be done if it wasn’t for our co-chairs. They did an excellent job, and I was so impressed. It’s the first time, and I know you were... it was the first time for you through too, but there would be like comments in there and they’re like, well, why is this here? And either one of them would say, oh, well, that was a comment we got from this person. So it made me... although I just barely joined, it made me feel really confident that anybody who gave input was really... it was definitely considered. It was definitely brought into the fold if it could be. And as Tammy said, there’s no perfect rules because, you know, that’s why we have lawyers and courts and all that other stuff. But I think it was a well-thought-out process. I think their leadership really... and I don’t know where we would have been without those two consistent leadership roles, but I hope... I know everybody’s not going to be happy because there’s always people that wanted something that we couldn’t do or something that was recommended that we not do, but I think, again, it’s not a bad... not a bad rule, and hopefully we can get it passed today.
I also want to thank Jenny and Emma, especially. Some of us are a lot newer to the committee and, you know, have not been a part for nearly the full two years, but I thought we were a very efficient group, and I’m glad we’re at this stage because especially when we’re checking through public comments, I think it went, you know, just very well, and I think we really took in the public comments as much as possible. And that’s what’s important to me, is making sure that, you know, public comments went on for a long time, and some of them were very similar to each other, but to really focus on every single comment that was made and take it in and come up with some sort of response to it is, I think, important to the process.
And I do want to mention Sarah too.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
It wouldn’t have happened without her. She spent a lot of time behind the scenes putting... grouping comments, even though we looked at everyone individually, we did... she was able to group them so they were in similar areas, so we made sure that we were giving consistent answers.
I think if not for color coding, it would have taken us twice as long.
For sure. The most important thing. And Tom and Mohammed... Mohammed joined us in the second half of this, but Tom and Patrick Brown were instrumental in our first year of this work. So I think that... I feel grateful.
Well, clearly, a lot of thought and effort has been put into this, and I think it’s thanks. You know, I’m so happy that we are at this point today, because I’m sure you all are. But this is a culmination of, you know, many years, many hours of meetings, and I think it really is a labor of love. And I’ll just echo too, Sarah, the analytical skills and the research and the organization. Like, it was like, thank you for keeping us on track. Yeah. So with that, I think we can turn it over to Sarah to, you know, walk us through. And I think we all have a handout that has been distributed, and it’s also been included in the agenda packet, but the side-by-side with highlights noted.
And again, these are minor changes from what the subcommittee voted out, right? And this is really a truing-up exercise. This is not substance. This is not even implementability. This is truing up in language because one of the things the state board committed to last year was, to the extent possible, right, ensure that the education quality standards for school... students who attend public schools would be as equivalent as possible for those students who attend our private schools or independent schools.
And we wouldn’t want someone looking at one set of rules and the other set of rules and say, well, why did they say discriminating this rule series but discrimination? And is there some intent there? So I think this is where we are, but it’s...
These are minor.
Yeah.
And I think similarly, they’re minor and defensible if they stay different. So I think I want us to have peace with that if they need to be different, because there’s a reason they need to be different, they’re different. And they are two sets of rules, and they apply to two sets of different groups, and we need to recognize that so that we only make changes if they’re necessary in my mind at this point, so.
Great. So I echo my thanks to all of you. You’ve all done a tremendous amount of work, and I’ve really enjoyed working with all of you, so thank you for this opportunity. Good afternoon, Secretary Saunders. I have not met you, so it’s very nice to meet you across the table. So I’m thinking that there are a few ways we could go about doing this. I’ll propose a path forward, but if this doesn’t work for your way of processing, we have many options forward and can be very efficient about this. Rich, like you, I am also a paper-based person, so through this whole process, I’ve also been behind the screen, like making my notes on pieces of paper. So if you are paper-based today, what I would call your attention to are the handout with the side-by-side that’s up on the screen now, and the final version of Rule 2000 and the final version of 2200, the clean copy, because that’s what I cut and pasted from. If we go through the amendments first, and that’s what I propose, that I just kind of talk through what these, as both Tammy and Kim said, these very small differences are. If I just talk you through what they are, you decide, do you like one better than the other? Would you like a combination of the two, or would you like them to remain separate? I propose that you make your decisions, and then we’ll note this here, and when... for each set of rules, when you vote them out, you may make other amendments or changes to either set of rules, or you may not, but whatever your decisions are here, in your motion, you can say and to include, and then reference, I’ve numbered them 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So hopefully, for Maureen and for others who are memorializing all this work, you’ll just go pretty smoothly. So does that make sense? We’ll go through just 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So the version that is cut and pasted into the Option A and Option B on the grid is the final... it’s called the To-Vote Final Rule... yep, the final... yeah, Final Rule Clean for each one.
There’s not a version 26?
There are, but right... the one that was... the one that you’re voting on is called Final Rule, just because it has even more typos corrected. It shouldn’t be really different than 26, but it’s the one I actually cut and pasted from. Okay. So the first chain... or the first set of differences is if you look at Rule 2000 and Rule 2200, it exists in the Statement of Purpose. Actually, both changes, the first two, are in the Statement of Purpose. I’ll note that EQS, the committee, voted out its final rule on April 10th. 2200 Committee voted out their final rule a few days ago, so you’ll see most recently updated. And I think that’s just important, just to note that there’s a timing here for when these... the final rules were voted out, which means there needs to be a little synchronicity going on with synchronizing these two sets of language, if you so choose. So in the first Statement of Purpose, there are sort of three changes I want to call your attention to. The first, as Jennifer noted, using the word discriminating versus discrimination. I think that’s pretty much a judgment call from my perspective. And the second one that is really not as meaningful is at the end of that paragraph, you can see in EQS, we said, for any other reason set forth in state or federal... you can see in EQS, we said, "for any other reason set forth in state or federal law." In 2200, we said, "any other characteristic protected by state or federal law." Again, that's your choice for what you like better. I mildly prefer characteristic protected by. So my, my views on those two changes are, really, that's a stylistic choice of the Board. The other two changes, I think, exist in 2200 to really emphasize that these rules are operating within the, the, the full breadth and opportunities of the Constitution, but also the full constraints of the Constitution as they relate to schools. So, "to the fullest extent allowed by law," and the word "unlawfully" are important words. I would certainly urge you not to strike them in 2200, but the question that's before you is whether you feel strongly enough that they also needed, need to be added to the, to EQS. So I'll leave it there, and I'll ask you how you would like to proceed with reconciling these two sets of language, if they are reconciled.
I was thinking of remembering that we may have had the advantage of this information in our last EQS meeting, and had made a decision that for our purposes, there was no such need for a qualifier. Is that, has that changed? Like, it's fine, in my opinion, that they're different.
And so are you just talking about the "to the fullest extent allowed by law," that language?
Yes, those qualifiers that are in 2200 are.
Can we take them in order, "to the fullest extent allowed by law"? You're saying.
My recommendation would be to leave the language. EQS has evolved that language over a painstaking process, and I think it does not seem, is it required that we would make that change in EQS?
Um, no, it's not required.
Why?
It's a true statement.
It's a true statement.
It's a true statement, and it's also a plot, right?
Correct. Yep. It emphasizes that the law, as it exists, both in case law and in federal law and in state law, has more power than the rules of the State Board. Which it would if you didn't say it.
Right. I am strongly in favor of not changing EQS language in that.
Whether to add in to EQS "to the fullest extent allowed by law"?
I don't think you need to do it.
Do you feel strongly about saying discrimination or discriminating?
I think we should say one or the other. I mean, I think it should be the same word.
I concur.
I would be more partial to discrimination, just because I think that sounds better. If I was Miranda, I would write discrimination.
I agree.
Agreed.
Tom agrees for sure.
Okay, so we are.
Certainly not discounting.
Anything that goes with grammar. Tom, we go.
So, so we are switching EQS to say discrimination.
Prohibit discrimination.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, then, the next one is unlawfully, appears in 2200. Do you see the need to include it in EQS?
I don't see the need to include it.
Okay.
I think that it sort of is implied already by the statute that enables the rule.
Okay.
I don't know what others think. It feels like the same thing as what we just talked about, "fullest extent allowed by law." I can appreciate why those modifiers might be in 2200, but I don't know that we need them in EQS.
Okay. No objection? The last one is changing "or any other reason set forth" to "any other characteristic," I'm sorry, "characteristic protected by state or federal law."
So is one more legally appropriate or accurate?
I think characteristic is what you, that phrase, "characteristic protected by law," that, that's what case law is going to use as a frame for protected classes.
But doesn't that limit discrimination to individual charac, right? Then we're only speaking, right, here about discrimination with respect to individual characteristics, as opposed to other reasons that you might discriminate? And I don't know what they might be, but it feels like characteristic is a subset of reason, and I would want to keep this as broad as possible, not knowing the kinds of discrimination that might be perpetrated.
Fair enough. If there were a reason, there could be reasons that people would believe are protected under state and federal law, but actually aren't, because they aren't a characteristic. But case law changes. Supreme Court's taking up pieces all the time.
Any other reason set forth in state and federal law? My, my sense is, is that reason feels far more general, and I would like a rule that is enduring, that if things change, so that it's not limited to a particular characteristic.
So the question that I pose back to you is, if that is a reasoning that is strongly held for the purposes of EQS, should it or should it not also be changed in 2200? I would view, my view is, for consistency's sake, in this matter, you, I would urge you to be consistent, if you feel that there's.
Again, my, my concern is that a characteristic is some sort of descriptor of an individual, and there might be other reasons that someone is discriminated against, and what I would not want to do is somehow inadvertently narrow, right, the application of the rule to a characteristic.
I would agree with you, because sometimes characteristics are observable by other people.
Yeah.
And not in, and not the reason, like, reasons are.
Yeah. So I think you are the one, Sarah, that had proposed changing the language in 2200 to "characteristic protected by," so.
Yes, and the reason for that is, when we were going through that analysis, we were really looking at case law, and that was, that's the frame, that's the phrase that's used, and so it would be a preferred term, but I don't feel strongly enough to say that if it's going to, my view is, if it's going to apply in one case, it should apply in both cases. I think characteristic is a little bit more common in legalese, but I also don't think that saying "any other reason set forth in" is going to cause a problem.
I would recommend we put the EQS language in that place on 2200.
I agree.
Okay. Hey.
Speak up, though.
Any other characteristic or reason that's protected or set forth? Cover everything?
Yep.
Although, I mean, characteristic would be.
A reason.
Yeah. I don't think we need to say both.
Okay.
I love the compromise.
But compromise is.
Exactly.
Which is what I witnessed in working with you during committee work.
Tom is our curmudgeon.
First year of our work as a committee.
It sounds like we have consensus.
I think we have consensus, so.
This is the spirit of moving.
When you vote on both, both rules will have changed in, you'll reference number one for that. This one went unnoted until last night, when I was going through line by line. When we were working through EQS, just as a matter of search and replace, we went through each instance of reference to school and determined whether, whether school was a placeholder for a larger set of terms, and in looking narrowly through the lens of just EQS and what it was saying in this Statement of Purpose, we believed that supervisory union, supervisory district, and school district incorporated all of the schools. I think the original word was "schools," and we changed it to supervisory union, supervisory district, and school district. It was not changed in 2200, and so this could be an opportunity, unless you see a reason for them to be different. It would make sense to me to change EQS back to what it originally said, which was "all schools," but again, you all.
Our rationale, I believe, for changing it this way is, we did not want a situation where individual schools made decisions that were contrary to what the supervisory union or supervisory district, right? I'm just recalling that that was why. We, we wanted there to be a consistency across schools, and we didn't want a situation where we put a local school board in the position of having a school interpret this, and they got to make a decision that was somehow on a, contrary to what maybe the district.
I think that school districts contain other entities besides schools that would also fall under this.
That's right. My preference would be the supervisory union, supervisory district, and school district to remain.
Okay.
And I also think that's consistent, we had a lot of talk about that in the committee, trying to make consistency across this throughout the rule and not have certain responsibilities bounce between schools and school districts also, so that was very clear that it was a supervisory union or district, right? Responsibility.
We spoke about ensuring, for the purposes of consistency, that we would, to the extent allowed for in statute, elevate to the highest governance level, each parts of these rules where we were distinguishing.
I think our other, our other comment, or sort of reflection on that, that that was consistent with sort of the legislative intent and perspective around preferred units of, of governance in the state right now, right? And some of this language was held over, right, from that?
Also, all schools are, all, it includes independent schools. When you say "all schools," right?
2200?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So importantly, 2200 needs to say "schools." We need to, I think, identify the governance structure that is most appropriate for the broader consistent implementation, and, and that's what we tried to do. So I think it makes sense they're different.
Good. All right. Next one should be pretty easy, and maybe you should just defer to Tom. But I think in, in legal terms, there are many cases that say, whether it's an "and" or an "or" has been an important turning point in legal interpretation, so I didn't feel like this was one of those Scrivener errors that could be corrected.
I flagged this because my concern was that if we had it as "and," that it seemed to be requiring members of all three of those environments simultaneously, and I, my thought was to include "or" because we want to capture people who are members of home environments, cultural environments, or social environments, that those are three separate categories. So that was my recommendation to switch it to "or."
I can envision a student whose home environment and cultural environment would be impacted by this definition, but maybe whose friend group, whose social environment is not. So "or" is, "or" is the way to go, I think.
All right, so number three, we'll change EQS to "or."
With the comma?
With a comma.
We are, we are.
All right, in definitions, the second of the two instances, restorative practices, was changed after some discussion in the 2200 Committee, and actually, I think, Jennifer, do you want to speak, I think you led the conversation for why you wanted to shift the language slightly to.
I think I was just trying to make it read better, which is why I put in the "neither nor."
Also, I think you were commenting that approaches, processes, and practices were also used, and I think when we opted to name all three of them, it was to ensure that the schools understood that whether a school was terming a restorative approach, a restorative practice, or a restorative process, or a restorative program, whatever they used.
Subsumed by restorative practices.
Their responsibility still held.
I think Mohammed commented on that. I think that's where that came from.
I think we changed it up a little bit after Mohammed changed.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
So would you like to use the language, neither restorative, the 2200 language, to be more broad? It essentially says the same thing, that you can't abdicate your responsibility to investigate call-out, name, and discipline behaviors by using any of those practices? So I don't think that difference is meaningful? Number four.
The definition's the same.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly. I think it paged broke.
That's okay. So what is the, what's the preference of the Board?
But I don't think it has a substantive difference, so.
To the point that we would not want a loophole here, right? My suggestion would be to take the language from 2200 and move it over so that they're consistent between the two, and that we're in the name of coverage, right? I also will note that sort of the field of restorative approaches and perspectives on that is rapidly shifting and changing, right? And so, you know, I think we need to be flexible in our language here, as the field continues to grow and develop around this, around this topic. We have to do that on the EQS side. I think we're just talking to the preface to that, is, you know, I think we need to have neither restorative approaches, practices, or processes, or programs shall remove, and then, you know.
Is everyone in agreement? Okay. So that's four for EQS.
And we have policy four or policy on?
And I looked that up, and I found it as "policy on."
Yeah. I think it's on, but I also. I also think people wouldn't be confused about what you're talking about, but yeah, I think the right way would be "on."
Let's do it the right way.
Good? Okay. So just to be clear, if you're looking, those who are online can see this, but here, so what, the change now will be to EQS, and it will say, "neither restorative approaches, practices, processes, nor programs." Right? Should I have a comma here there?
I don't think so.
No. Shall remove or lessen to any degree a supervisory union, supervisory district, or school's responsibility under Vermont law and policy, and policy to et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Read okay? Excellent. Next, we've largely addressed this, it just appears exactly the same in a different part of each rule. The question is whether or not unlawfully shall be added into the nondiscrimination requirement in EQS, and/or if we should use "reason set forth in" or "characteristic protected by." And if you want to mirror what you did above, what you'll tell me to do is to say, "reason set forth in" should be changed in 2200.
And keep out unlawfully from EQS.
Good. Now, these sections aren't exactly the same, but they large, this is one of those sections that you would have been, think, having in your, the back of your mind before, when you said some sections will be substantially the same, they just appear a little bit differently in each set of the rules, but they both refer to some broad requirements around curriculum. In EQS, there was a, a long conversation about whether the word "curriculum" should be, continue to be included, or if it should be excluded, if learning content areas should be the new preferred phrase, because there are some reference to learning content areas on the Agency of Education site. reference to learning content areas on the Agency of Education site. There was also a consideration of whether academic content areas was the proper term. And the committee opted, I think in a stroke of consensus building, to say curriculum, learning content areas. And I will admit that I continue to remind you that learning content was an area, was a phrase that was used on the AOE site. After sleeping on it and then looking at it in the context of 2200, and Kim and I and the other committee members went through this two days ago, looking at it in a different rule, when you say curriculum content or curriculum, learning content areas, it seemed very clunky. And the 2200 Committee agreed and said, let's go back to curriculum content areas and drop the learning part. I think you can choose whatever the heck you want.
Thank you. Let's just- I understand how that originated, but-
Yeah.
How did you do it?
And a stroke of compromise.
This is why inter-
So we were deleting learning from EQS.
The EQS.
Okay.
Further.
I do have a question, though. The DQS, as written, references certain sections and certain titles of the sections. Have we looked? I mean, that's not, that's not something we should consider here, but if we're changing things here, we should be notified in the agency because the agency will need to reopen rulemaking for DQS to realign the two. So just, that's, I'm putting a pin in that. Okay.
Could you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Could you repeat that, please, related to the-
The DQS, right? So the DQS is effectively undone, right? So what the agency did is they said, we're going to reference sections of the EQS and then promulgate guidance, but there hasn't been capacity to do that. So there's distinct references in the DQS to sections here and titles in the EQS that as we are updating this, will make the DQS out of date.
Because they're referencing section numbers.
They're referencing sections, section numbers and titles. So the agency opted, instead of actually writing the rule, to reference this rule. And so there's going to, I'm just noting, as we go through here and we are modifying these things, that the DQS will need to be updated. I haven't looked, I have not looked at it recently, but it just occurred to me that as we're choosing titles, and I know that came, I know that came up in the discussions of the DQS.
And Tammy, not only titles, but remember, we renumbered curriculum content areas was 21.
The DQS will have to be reopened because otherwise, that was always the risk in how that rule was done, that this would happen. And so basically, the entire quality assurance section of the DQS will have nothing to reference anymore because we've done all of this. Let me just put, it just occurred to me as we, should have thought that earlier, but it occurred to me as we were talking about these titles, that that's going to be relevant and we're going to need to put together some sort of memorandum to the agency to let them know that they're going to have to make adjustments on that side.
Okay.
I think if it were that easy, we would have done it. But when we moved, what happened was we moved tiered systems of support-
That's one of them.
-appropriately up. Because it was sort of hanging out there in a space that wasn't really related to the other ways of delivering instruction. And so we appropriately reorganized and moved it, but that then made 2105 or whatever it is, that has been rolling off of people's tongues for years, a 2106. So I don't know that there's another way to organize that section in that it, that whole list becomes subbullets, maybe. So I don't know, Sarah, if we, if when we pass and approve, there is some numbering mechanism that retains the clarity of that section without bumping numbers that are otherwise referenced, can we authorize, Sarah, to do that? If it, if it works?
Because that would be a non-substantive, that would just be an organizational-
Formating situation.
So I'm fine with that. Will you remind me of that? I just want to point out what I think I do.
I just opened up DQS, too. So while we go through the rest of this, I'm going to see what numbers they are referencing.
It starts with four, five, six, and seven. We got rid of eight with graduation requirements.
Section 131.1 is a part of, so the entire self-evaluation section, for example, the title there for 2120.6 no longer, it's not something we should reconcile in this meeting. It was just, it occurred to me as we're starting to change these terms, that we have a rule over here over which we have no control and those two things aren't going to line up anymore and that's going to need to get fixed.
Fall into, and I told you so. I'd love for Emily Simmons to be able to weigh in, just to speak broadly about the level of realignment that may be needed as we move forward.
Okay. Do we want to, I think she's on, right? Do we want to do that when we get to, when we go through these amendments? Let's go into the rule and I'll point that part out and then, yeah.
I just don't, I haven't lined it, lined the two up at all.
All right. The second part came up, the EQS Committee in their last version, their final version of the rule, received some feedback from the agency that asked to provide a little bit more, just a little bit more of a description attached to the term ethnic and social equity studies. And so the committee proposed adding some language that you'll see now is added in both. It comes after the comma and it says, which promotes critical thinking regarding the history contribution, it might need to be contributions, but I'll check, contribution and perspectives of ethnic groups and social groups. That comes right from Act One. It's a phrase used in Act One. And so when it was added to EQS, the committee opted to put the whole title of Act One of 2019 in. And in the conversation with 2200, the committee reflected on the title of Act One of 2019, noted that the title included the word public schools, thought that might be a little confusing, decided to take it out. And so it exists here as either something to reconcile or to not. So I put it before you.
Two things. I have Act One, and it is contributions. So I think that needs to be amended for both.
Yes.
I also do think that it would be confusing to include the title of Act One in 2200. I mean, even though that is the title of it, but I think, you know, if I were reading this and I saw that, it would, you know, make me wonder. So I think for 2200, citing the act feels appropriate to me. I don't know, I mean, EQS can put the whole title in there or just cite the Act One.
I agree, the title should not be in 2200, and I am somewhat agnostic about what we do about whether or not the title is in 2000. Did you have a strong feeling? Anybody else from the board or the committee?
You do reference Act One of 2019 elsewhere in EQS without saying the whole title. But I think this is one where it's a judgment call.
Maybe less words or more.
So take it out?
I would say take it out. Is that okay with people?
All right. All right. Very last one. This is one that I will tell members of the EQS Committee, never came up, never noticed it. It did come up in EQS, I'm sorry, it came up in 2200. Previously, both rules had language that mirrors what you see now in EQS, which is a requirement for every school's comprehensive plan, that they have a comprehensive plan for responding to student misbehavior as required by 16 VSA 1161A. It used, that 1161A used to address things like behavior, language, classroom attendance, clothing, and treatment of property. It was updated, I think, in 2019 or 2021 and is much more robust. It now has, requires policies around, I think, seclusion, expulsion, suspension, weapons policies, what to do and when there are bomb threats, et cetera. And so there were seven or eight different things that discipline and misbehavior are now, seven or eight things regarding discipline and misbehavior that are addressed in this section. And so considering that these may also change in the future, 2200 simply cited that statute so that the further description wouldn't become outdated. So the question is, should the same narrowing down in just broad reference to the statute
I think I probably might recommend we do that such that an incomplete list not be inconsistent with the full breadth of what's expected there. I do like that what we talked about in 2200 was, is there some version of that list that sort of kicks that exhaustive list up to a few buckets of categories we could reference? And I think as we looked at that in statute, it seemed not really possible because it's a really extensive section of the statute.
It was.
And that maybe the list on the left is no longer fully capturing what's there.
Correct. The list now includes everything from a school's approach to classroom management in response to disruptive behavior, to information and training around methods of conflict resolution and peer mediation, anger management, a school's response to significant disruptions, how the school will ensure that all staff and contractors who routinely have unsupervised contact with students periodically receive training and maintenance in safe, orderly, civil, and positive learning environments. So it is quite a, and there are three or four other sections here, so it is pretty
My recommendation would still, would stand that we mirror the EQS language so as not to accidentally exclude that full extent of that section.
Mirror 2200?
Let the EQS language mirror that which is in 2200.
All right. So with that, I think that concludes your decision-making for the amendments. And if you would like, I will hand it over to the chairs to say anything you would like about 2000. I don't know if you want to walk through any other changes or if you just want to launch into questions. I'm also willing to go right to the section that we renumbered to see if Emily wants to weigh in on that.
Yeah, there are two. I just went through. It's, the tiered system of support section is 2125.5 in the DQS. It's now 2120.5. And we changed the title on 2120.6. Those are the only two that quickly, I think-
It used to be 2120.7.
Seven, yeah.
Curriculum coordination is the same, but the number changed to 2120.7.
Thank you. So those are the only, very quickly, those are the only two things I think that impact.
Is there any way, like within EQS, to note, you know, 2120.5, old title has now been moved to whatever the new number is, new title? It just seems like a big ask to reopen DQS.
So Emily just came, I can see her camera just came on. I'll tell you, the agency did look at this and I think had sent, they did see that there was some rearranging going on. But we rearranged differently and more, we renumbered correctly after we received their feedback, so I would be happy to-
I just want to make sure, it just occurred to me, we need to make sure the two things sync up and we're doing all this work over here and I just didn't want it to be that we created a mess over here.
As a, as an agency perspective, we want to make sure there is alignment, so I have asked our general counsel just to share our process for doing that crosswalk, to ensure that alignment. The, like, local graduation requirements, which are listed separately here now, is no longer its own section. So that is now not included.
We have Emily with us. Emily, can you hear us? Oh, you're muted or something. We can't hear you.
I wonder if, let me turn my microphone, let me just see if I can get her from here. Emily, do you want to try now? Hold on. All right, go ahead and try now.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. So yes, this is a problem, but I hear a few solutions about how we can address it.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big problem. I just didn't want to lose track of it, right?
We just want to document where we need to have that alignment.
So this is a problem that we anticipated and asked whether there was any renumbering contemplated in the EQS rulemaking. And at that time, the answer was no. So that has obviously changed. And that's, that's just how things work out sometimes. Sarah, a question for you.
Yep.
I wonder if a parenthetical, where possible, I think there is one rule where it's not totally clear right now, but I wonder if a parenthetical, something like previously known as-
Okay.
Or perversion numbered as-
Okay.
Would get us most of those by there.
That's why I brought it up now, because we can solve it now.
Yes. And I also wonder if nesting some of these together might also be a solution, like personalized learning plans and as part of tiered systems of support. And I'm happy to do, I'm happy to work with Emily.
Yeah.
If the board sees this as simply a numbering and not a substantive change, no change to wording except for directory language or-
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I think checking on field consideration of whether, because broadly, I think, something like personalized learning plans are part of tiered systems of support, they are also their own thing. So I would be sensitive to restructuring in a way that puts something subordinate to another where it isn't the only place it lives. So I caution us on that. I think that, that one's, the tiered system of support is probably easy, as is curriculum coordination, where we've gotten rid of a section like 2120.8, which is graduation requirements. I think, I'm not exactly how that gets reconciled when it's-
Well, we didn't, we got rid of, it was called, actually, 2120.7 was called graduation requirements, and then there was a 2120.8 that was called locally-
That's the one they reference in DQS.
But that's the one they reference in DQS.
I'm not quite sure why that's the case, but that's what's in DQS.
We collapsed the very last paragraph of 21, which is what is now 2120.8.
Exists, I think, as the very last paragraph there. And so we put them all together.
Yeah, we thought it unnecessary to create the confusion of the local versus broader graduation requirements, so weren't sure exactly why they were necessarily separate before, but we thought it wise not to have it. So maybe in that title that's 2120 point, whatever it is now, graduate eight-
Yep.
Which is graduation requirements, you could say formerly known as. Formerly, also known as, AKA.
I think there's a substantive challenge here, right? Because what was under the former section was a subsection of this, right? And so the intent in DQS, I don't believe, was to refer to the entire section, right? Because remember that these sections are what, when the agency promulgates sort of the guidance around this, right? These sections are what people are supposed to include in their self-evaluation. And so including that in- And so including that entire section would not be appropriate to do so, right?
So couldn't you put a note that says, for DQS, compliance assurance is found in paragraph, you know, whatever?
Did you hear, yeah, did you hear that, Emily? Jennifer's comment there? What do you think of some of these solutions?
I'm nervous about that because some of these questions are substantively confusing. I'm thinking especially about the two graduation requirement section.
Mm-hmm.
And the curriculum coordination versus content areas. I think on the fly, it is a difficult position for the agency to be in because we need to, if we were to do this on the fly, decide was it coordination or was it content? I don't know. I don't recognize coordination.
I agree with you, Emily. That's why I'm bringing it up, because I think there's some alignment. Some of the things that have been done in the EQS to true this whole system up on these two rules have substantive implications for DQS. And I don't know that it's simply a fix of modifying language in here. And again, I think it's all fixable, but I don't know we can do it on the fly. That's why I said it just, we need to put a pin in it that we can't lose track of the fact that we did these things here and that they have substantive implications over here.
So from an agency perspective, we will.
I think we can let Sarah work with Emily.
Yes.
That won't implicate passage of EQS today. And I think also the motion is drafted so that the co-chairs are able to work with Sarah to finalize and make any, you know, last minute, non-substantive changes.
Yeah, I think there are fewer, I think the changes aren't so much in DQS. I think the changes are having to go to be over on DQS because of the way the references set up. I think we can all sort it out. Again, my only point was, is I didn't want to lose track of the fact that we were making these kinds of changes in this document where we had another rule that was specifically referencing sections and titles in this document that we were modifying. And then all of a sudden, we wake up one day and we forgot that these two things weren't aligned anymore. That's all. I don't think it's, I don't think it has any implications for our work for EQS. That's why I said put a pin in it. And it's something I think we just need to, it's got to be dealt with. But, and we don't have, that's, you have that rule. So this really is, that's all I'm saying, putting a pin in it. We got to not lose track of this. But at Jennifer's point, I wouldn't want to do this on the fly because I think there are some substantive things here.
We agree with that.
Yeah.
And I think as we think about, similarly, I wouldn't think it to be non-substantive to put tiered systems of support subordinate to personalized learning. I think that is its own thing. And it was, we did hear comment that implementation of MTSS or tiered systems of support is inconsistent across the state. And we were intentional to pull in statute there to really sort of firm that up as its own section. So, yeah, I think that we don't want to do that on the fly either.
I'm not in favor of making changes in EQS here. I think we're going to get our stable document, but there is another document over here that references it. And I think that's what we have to sort out later. But just noting that when we make these kinds of changes we're making right now, that there are spillover effects.
And just because maybe you caught this already, Sarah, in 2120.7, curriculum coordination, we reference at the end of that first sentence pursuant to 2120.5, which is referencing the curriculum content areas. Did you catch it already?
Right up here?
Uh, yes. Oh, you fixed it.
So I fixed it. What I will now do is, since you've decided to change the title.
You'll fix that.
I'll fix that too.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Unrelated, but while you're fixing?
Yes.
The bottom of page 12, number two.
12 of EQS?
Oh, EQS.
Okay.
Physical, maybe my page is different than you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Tell me.
2120.6. Okay, got it.
Physical.
Education.
Education.
Aha.
Number two, oh, it's capitalized there.
Okay.
My copy that I am, is not capitalized.
That's, yeah, that's, I am.
Okay.
If, I think I went through one more time last night.
Right.
Yeah. It's amazing how like, the 40th time, I catch things. It's funny.
There is a V26.
But as you think of things, I mean, we've got until Friday to submit to LCAR. So I'll be going through it, you know, at least one more time. I might even ask the law clerk at our firm just to read it one more time with fresh eyes and we'll double check. Okay.
I don't, as we, as you ask about the piece under physical education, what we tried to do and we received some feedback from the AOE, and we had noticed it as well, that that is a far more prescriptive section of the curriculum content than is actually even in statute. And it can butt up a little bit against the proficiency, you know, learning and proficiency graduation requirements. So we tried to do a both and because we had not taken testimony on any implications of removing some specific requirements. We, we honestly missed it in the first round and it didn't come up in, is a specific issue to address in the public comments section. But we tried to do a both and. So the language that we added in there was equivalent there of, or at a minimum, and or and provided in alignment with the school district's proficiency-based learning and graduation requirements. So there may be other ways to evaluate how those proficiencies are being met. And this gives space for that because that is actually also in alignment with the rules We didn't feel comfortable just taking out that very specific reference. I don't know how it got there in 2014. And we didn't have the time to take testimony on what it would mean if it were gone. We threaded the needle. There to be much else that happened in the last round.
There were a few paragraphs that were, that was language offered by the agency to build out the description of tiered systems of support. And we just accepted all of their comment. Yep.
Jump out at folks. You're going to be like, oh, no, we didn't remember that. For us, we sleep with this document, so we have a harder time noticing the new stuff, I think. Any other questions from the board?
Do you guys have which options you are accepting from, because I do, I just.
Oh, the, from the sheet?
From the proposed amendments to reconcile language. According to my keeping track, EQS is accepting options 1, 3, 4, 6, and 7. Although I don't know if we need to specify because it wasn't like.
EQS was not accepting 1.
You made, you changed discriminating to discrimination.
Discrimination.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's not, and I was just going to say that, like, it's not.
So you want, you can say as referenced in the proposed amendment document, and I'll call it V2. And what we've discussed today is captured here in this document.
Saving the version that we're keeping?
Yep, yep. I can save it and I'll have it posted and then we'll update the, you know, the final draft that you voted out because what you see now is to vote. And then what I'll post and send to Maureen and Suzanne after will be the voted out draft that will include these updates.
Motion just includes that as corrected.
As corrected in document.
V2, yep, proposed amendments.
V2.
So I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Vermont State Board of Education approve Rule Series 2000, the version, which is now noted as the clean final version, as further amended at today's meeting. And those include sections, this spreadsheet titled Proposed Amendments to Reconcile Language, which would be sections 1, 3, 4, 6, and 7, to be filed with the Secretary of State as its final version.
The amendment as referenced in V2 of Proposed Amendments to Reconcile. Because that, we didn't take the bottom of 1.
All second. Do you need a full call vote?
The discussion?
Does it move right on to vote? More discussion? Maureen, do you need a full call? Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Lyle Dutton?
Yes.
Richard Warner?
Yes.
Dana O'Carroll?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you.
Good rule.
Very, very good.
All right, so that takes us to.
Oh. Hi, Lyle, we can hear you.
I can hear you perfectly. I'm going to abstain from voting. I've been jumping on and off the, using the, whatever that other platform is. I can hear that perfectly, but I can't hear it over team. So just going to abstain from voting. I have been here, but thank you.
I'll relay that. Did you hear that, Maureen? So Lyle has been moving back and forth from platforms. He can hear us, but has had some trouble with this platform. So he'd like to abstain from voting because he's been moving in and out.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said.
And he wants you to know that he doesn't disagree with anything that's been said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck out there.
We're missing you, Lyle.
He's still here.
They're missing you.
Okay, so this brings us to the anticipated vote of final draft Rule Series 2200, independent school program approval. So we've already done, I think, some of the work as we've looked through the proposed amendments to reconcile language. And just to recap where we are, Act 1 of 2019 created a working group to help implement the goals of Act 1. And the Act 1 working group was given fairly broad discretion to look at any rule statute, et cetera, and make recommendations. They then turned their attention to the education quality standards, which is what we just discussed. In their recommendations that were submitted to the State Board of Education, they recommended that independent schools be included in the education quality standards. And I believe that it was at our meeting last May, the State Board of Education had a discussion and determined that we couldn't require independent schools to comply with education quality standards because we are constrained by statute. And under the statute, an independent school has the option, it is its choice to elect to become a school meeting as designated as meeting education quality standards. So we realized last year that we did not have that authority. And what we decided to do instead was to reopen 2200 because we have authority to create rules that pertain to the approval of independent schools. So last summer, we reopened 2200. And the first phase was what I referred to as the lift and shift from EQS to 2200, really taking advantage of the very thoughtful work that had been done by the Act 1 working group in the first instance and the EQS committee in the second. So we really benefited and that allowed our process to move much more quickly. So we implemented a lot of that Act 1 language into 2200. In addition to that, we created some new language pertaining to an annual assurance form that independent schools will now need to complete on an annual basis as a condition of their continued approval. And we also created a framework for recognizing accrediting agencies. Prior versions of, it was in Rule Series 7000, had listed out accrediting agencies by name. And we found that some of those agencies no longer existed. And really, what we were more interested in was ensuring that any accrediting agency could meet this framework that we've now laid out very clearly in 2200. Those are the three main buckets. And then Sarah also did a really massive reorganization. So we, because we noticed, for instance, that complaint, no, I think investigations came before complaints in the rule, where logically, there would not be an investigation without a complaint. So we asked Sarah to really go through and she also moved things so that it's just, it's much more user-friendly. And hopefully, independent schools will find it as a, you know, useful document, sort of one-stop shopping, with the clear requirement that they are obviously required to keep abreast of any changes to rules, statute, and whatever, so that they will be able to continue to be approved.
I'll just say, really great work by the 2200 committee as well. This was a mammoth effort and this is a rule that would just closed and got reopened. And I think it's also a great example of how the State Board takes input in its continuing monitoring the field. Because even after the modifications were made for 173, some feedback was already coming in, right? And we were able to use that opportunity to true this up in ways that I think are going to make it a stronger rule. But great work, team.
Thank you.
Keep it going.
So I think maybe there are two important things just to note since the 2200 committee, there's probably more, but there's two that are on my mind that I feel like you all should be said out loud before you vote. One is the renaming. So the committee considered, as it has through this whole process, that the terms that are used to denote the different categories of schools are wordy and complicated, and has tried a few variations of how to simplify, but also make more clear what category of school the rules apply to in each set. And the way that the final version landed is that all approved independent schools, bring you right down to the section here. And in the definition section, you can see that an approved independent school is any school that meets the requirements of these rules and must abide by these rules, except for the sections that relate to the receipt of public funding and delivery of special education. So those are what we had been referring to as 2229, the receipt of public tuition. Just as a side note, in the final comb through, there are some provisions in Section 2231 that require independent schools who are eligible to receive public tuition to also comply with other activities in order, in the delivery of special education in order to receive public tuition. So it's no longer just, you have to comply with 2229. You also have to comply with 2231. We make that clear. But the categories of schools are now approved independent school. And then if you are receiving public tuition, you're referred to, which means that you provide special education services that have been approved by the secretary. You are called an independent school approved for public tuition. There was, I think, a lot of concern around the use of the term public tuition and public funding through the rules. And so in this final draft, we worked really hard to be consistent and to note that when you are approved for providing special education, you are an independent school approved for public tuition. So now there are two categories of schools named in this rule. There still are recognized independent schools. They're not covered in this rule.
Got it all straight?
All, all schools that have to go through the approval process are called approved independent schools. If you don't receive public tuition. There was, I think, a lot of concern around the use of the term "public tuition" and "public funding" through the rules. And so in this final draft, we worked really hard to be consistent and to note that when you are approved for providing special education, you are an independent school approved for public tuition. So now there are two categories of schools named in this rule. There still are recognized independent schools. They're not covered in this rule.
Got it all straight?
All schools that have to go through the approval process are called approved independent schools. If you don't receive public tuition...
You're still approved.
You're still approved.
Remind me of the state's interest. Why, and this is just a question, I'm trying to get it straight in my head. Why is it that we're using state resources to approve independent schools if they're not, if they're ineligible for public tuition when we have an accrediting process that they can go through?
That would be a legislative question.
So we're required under statute to do that?
Yeah.
So statute creates these categories, and so we are, so we're making sure the rule aligns with statute?
Yes, that we consider. Now, yes, exactly, yeah.
That's just, I just want to be clear in my head.
They consider, yep.
Why we have these bins. And the reason we have the bins is because that's what statute is requiring of us in the rule.
Maybe you can point us to where it is, because I, you know, I'm like a broken record on this.
Sticky noted.
I similarly shared that question with the 2200 Committee and trying to figure out, because it is a capacity issue for the OE, for us, for our time. I think, I'm not sure I read it as black and white in the statute, because 828 has not necessarily changed to recognize these different categories of approved schools. So 16VSA 828 hasn't necessarily characterized out approved independent school eligible to receive public tuition or ineligible to receive public tuition. I think we may want to, I sort of would advocate strongly that we do. It won't happen this session, but that we make specific recommendations regarding statute on this topic. I think with the change of 173 only approving tuition for approved schools that are able to serve students with special needs, I agree with you, Tammy, that I'm not, I'm no longer really seeing the state's interest in an approval process when it's not about the public dollar.
I will say, I mean, this should be a topic for another day, and I don't want to derail us from where we are on today's agenda, but I would argue that the 49 pages of 2200 are worth something, and we have an interest in educating our children in Vermont and assuring, you know, that this is worth something. This is a lot more than 16VSA Section 906.
Oh, no, of course.
So I think there, I mean, to me...
But it used to be intended for all schools that were approved, they got public tuition.
I understand.
Now, there are a lot of requirements on schools that aren't going to get public tuition.
And I think, you know, if we were to, I would want to hear from independent schools, do they find it valuable to be approved even though they're not receiving public tuition?
But there's an accreditation process which they could pay for. And when we think about the resources expended and the use of our public dollars, just for, like, being as tight as we can on those where we're sending public tuition makes more sense to me than worrying about the marketing value for independent schools that aren't serving students with special needs, that wouldn't be eligible for public tuition. So I know that's a philosophical matter, but I think it's one worth really considering how much time and attention we spend as a board on independent schools and as the agency spends on approval of independent schools or reapproval, and the accrediting process that we've built in here to acknowledge accrediting agencies. And frankly, I understand that there's a lot of cost involved with that. But schools can still be recognized, students can still get their diploma, they are not considered truant. And before, approved meant you got money. And so it's a new context, and it's not for this set of rules, but I think it's an important question, Tammy. I think it's one that would benefit from our attention at another time. And there's probably several things we want to help.
Sounds like this is a policy discussion, right? And we're a regulatory board, and, you know, our job is...
But we're not. We have a responsibility.
We have a responsibility.
Roles and responsibilities to make recommendations to legislature on matters that we noticed to be inconsistent. So that's what I'm saying. Like, that would be more a, let's look at this, zoom out, look at it in the fall, among other areas that we've noticed because of our regulatory responsibilities seem somewhat inconsistent with the, there's several places, like out-of-state independent schools and meeting students who need special services, that's not delineated, but we notice it in the context of creating our rules. So there are, it is our responsibility, as much as regulation, to inform legislation where we notice there to be matters that come into our body of work. So not for now, but I appreciate that question that I've asked it to, and I think it will invite itself to more attention, hopefully, after, maybe the fall, before the legislative session starts again. On our little bucket list, I think Sarah will keep in a bucket list.
Are you walking through any part of this?
I think the only other change I wanted to alert you to is that we added another finding for both accredited and unaccredited schools. And it was a specific finding because schools that want to receive tuition and therefore are providing special education services are required to submit their application to receive public tuition when they seek reapproval under the normal approval process. And there wasn't a specific finding where the board could, for either category of school that submits their request to receive public tuition, that said that the board has found that they meet the requirements of 2229 and 2231 and the enrollment provisions, et cetera. And so we added that.
Finding 17?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so that's now 17 for, under 2224, it's now 17 and number 4, I believe. Let me scroll to it here. Yes. So it's number 17 and 2224.4. And it's number 4. It's A17 and B4. And for the agency, you already have a public register of approved independent schools. We also just clarify the request or the new directive to maintain a register that has the list of recognized schools and approved independent schools and distinguish whether they're eligible or ineligible to receive public tuition. And then finally, I think there was a, there was one change, I think, of note that was made in response to public comment regarding IEPs and the requirements that schools agree to, we had some substantial conversation around...
Meaning IEP meetings, yeah.
Agreeing to, yep, agreeing to participate meaningfully in a student's IEP meetings to include making every effort to attend scheduled meetings. And you clarified that it is the local LEA who is responsible for administering the IEP. Sorry, I'm trying to, here we are.
Do we have comment from LEAs on that?
Um, did we have, this was in response to comment.
Yeah.
In response to comment? I just want to make sure about that.
Yep.
Because this has been a real sticky point.
Yep, so they wanted to clarify, yeah, they wanted to clarify what, have it be very clear what their role was. And so we said they are responsible for the administration of the IEP.
It's sort of being overt about the expectation and understanding. Tom was saying sometimes the timing is mutually unavailable and not possible, but I think that it offers the responsibility to both parties, to both plan that you're going to attend if you're going to receive public tuition. You're part of that IEP team, and you need to be there to the extent you can. And then consequently, LEA, we already told the independents they need to do this, so you need to make every effort to be available, you know, schedule a time that can work for families, the independent school and the...
Are we clear in here? Because I looked for it, but I am not a 2200 expert by any means. But are we clear, I don't see where we're clear in here, that the SEA still has a responsibility under IDA for students with IEPs who are placed in independent schools. We're very clear about that with respect to the LEA, but the SEA, right, that, right, that is important, right? Because we, that, the SEA is who makes the assurance to the feds under IDA. So is it sufficient only to have the LEA noted in here? Should we also make it clear that the SEA has a responsibility here as well?
Does it have a responsibility to the independent school relationship or the federal government?
Has a responsibility to the child with the IEP. And that honestly is a question. I'm not trying to poke a hole in something. I just, and perhaps that we have, we have an imperfect role, that's a good role, and we have to come back to that at some point. But that is not an inconsequential thing, right? That the SEA ultimately has the responsibility for ensuring that we comply with IDA. That's not the LEA's responsibility, that's the SEA's responsibility under IDA. That's what we, that's what happens when we take the money.
Not sure where would fit in these rules.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I mean, if it, if it should be referenced, is there a broader, is there a sort of top of that section category that could do so, Sarah, that you're thinking?
I just want to make sure that we haven't assigned all of the responsibility to the LEA when it isn't just the LEA.
I don't think we did anything that, because we just cited what is the case is that LEA administers plan, that's what we said. We didn't say anything that abrogates any other responsibility.
Okay, great.
We also repeated what is said in statute, because I was thinking about this, Tammy.
Thank you.
The Secretary shall establish minimum standards of services for students receiving sped in independent schools.
Okay, that's referenced. Super, thank you.
So it's referenced, it's the first line of 2973, and I think it's right here in, I think we rewrote, I think it's rewritten. Secretary shall have the responsibility to set, it's in 2929. Just do a quick search for minimum level of service. I know it's also repeated in the rule.
It's in 2223. You're covered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. It was what, again, not trying to derail anything, it's one of those things that came to mind after we had that meeting the other day, that we can get ourselves in a little bit of a pickle if we're not clear about that.
The Committee changed, extended a little bit the date for the accrediting agencies. As you know, this rule is going to become effective. They did not touch, since you last talked about, the effective date, the effective date is now July 1. The Committee considered whether, how much lead time would be needed for accrediting agencies to go through the new process for becoming recognized that the board would administer.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
I was thinking about it on my drive down. So we don't know how long that's going to take.
It's a, it's a new process.
We were just guessing at, I don't know, it'll take for it to get to my Committee and then get to the full Board.
Yep, and whether or not you'd have a meeting in August.
Right, so we may or may not need to change that date. But what happens if this approval process for accrediting agency lags for whatever reason? If a school is approved with that accreditation, but that, that agency hasn't yet been added to the list, and I don't even know how many, I know two, I don't know how many of the others will still be live. What's the, what's the effect on the school if that happens? So my, my assumption is that nothing happens to the school, that the school is still approved until it's not, even though we're waiting for this, the agency to get its paperwork in and get approved. I don't think there's an effect on the school if this approval of the agency process lags. If there is going to be an effect on the school, then I'm going to be in favor of a longer window, a bigger window.
Well, and does that analysis change if it's a boarding school? Because we do require boarding schools to be accredited.
That, that's the one that I, you asked this question, and I told you a couple days ago, I said, I really don't know the answer. I don't know how the agency would enforce the existence or not of the accrediting, you know, an accrediting agency overseeing. We did discuss the fact that if there is a lag, the rules do depend on the accrediting agency to be, I would call it like an informer. So they have a duty, you've required the accrediting agencies to actively report anything that they come to know about a school, whether it's financial capacity, the loss of accreditation. You have some very tight timeframes for that process of sharing that information, because they have a, they have a very, they have an accelerated and abbreviated approval process if you are accredited. So what, what we weren't sure of a few days ago is really what happens if those accrediting agencies lose their recognized status for a short period of time. I don't know the answer to it. You're right. We thought maybe October 1 would be fine. I was going through and last night with editing and did think a little bit more about the boarding programs. And I, I just have to say, I don't know what the impact would be to a boarding program, but it's important for you to remember, as you just noted, that if you do operate a boarding program, there are other licensing requirements. And I don't know if continued accreditation ties into something that DCF requires or some other agency. And so if there could be an impact, I don't know that there wouldn't be, but I also can't tell you that there is.
Wait, 2223.36, wait.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Sorry. To be approved under these rules. So like, as you pointed out, there are, if a school became unaccredited, they would have to notify the agency, which is not what that's saying. It's saying to be approved under these rules. So that makes me wonder, if we have a school that is approved and accredited, and, you know, for whatever reason, through, you know, no fault of the accrediting agency or the school, that accrediting agency has not been recognized by the State Board of Ed by, call it, October 1st, they would still be approved unless and until they come up for reapproval, correct? Because they haven't done any of the triggering events that would require them to notify the Secretary.
Correct. But what I can tell you is if someone else who also governs their operation has made a decision in their rules that says, that somehow points back to your rules, and it was the reference to DCF here that made me think, I don't know, it could be state rules cross-reference and depend on one another as state agencies frequently. And so if you feel like October 1 is pushing it, you should reconsider that. If you feel very confident that you will be able to stand up a process, receive the applications, go from Committee to Board to Notice and make that decision between July 1 and October 1, the 90 days, with, just, that's all.
We, I think maybe we asked this question, I don't know if we got an answer, the scope of the concern, like, we, doing, we, it has been noted that the list of accredited, accrediting agency was going to sunset July 1 of this year for a long time. And I think that there's two accrediting agencies that are the primary source of our accelerated accreditation slash approval process. I don't know, though, if any of the others on the list, some of which don't even exist anymore, are actually on that, that...
Even the two primary would have to go through our process.
No, I understand.
So I think we just want to make sure that we have enough time for them to do that.
I'm suspecting these will be effective, you know, after going through Alcar by that July 1 date, and it would seem like, you know...
My, you know, my, my suggestion, just because we don't know, and I plan on meeting with these guys to say, how big of a problem is this? Because I don't know that. Is if we had a December deadline, then I would feel six months for sure, whatever that is, five months, for sure, they should be able to do it.
Does that present any problems for other aspects of the implementation?
This is just, this is just that all the accrediting agencies that are currently under 7,000 would remain on the list.
Until December.
Until December. Then we would have the new list that was, of those agencies that have gone through this process.
Can, so aside from adding another five months for a timeframe, is there another way that we might...
Does that present any problems for other aspects of the implementation?
This is just, this is just that all the accrediting agencies that are currently under 7,000 would remain on the list.
Until December.
Until December. Then we would have the new list that was of those agencies that have gone through this process.
Can, so aside from adding another five months for a timeframe, is there another way that we might say must have presented their materials for consideration by September 1 or something?
Or October 1?
Or, you know, I feel more comfortable with that than the problem lies with us doing it or like must have submitted application by August 1 or. I am concerned about, um, that much of a runway and something that's been known as this list is going away.
I don't see a downside, though. I don't see a downside to the extra two months.
I think, in thinking about the two that we primarily do business with, I think you're right. I think, I think that it wasn't really the intention that cleaning up that list meant we were going to end up with a whole nother slew of places wanting to go through the application process with the State Board to become an accredited, a recognized accrediting agency. So, um, I.
But to Tom's point, is there a downside? Like, I guess from what I'm hearing, like, it's not going to affect implementation of the rule overall, correct? We're buying ourselves a little bit of time in terms of our workload here at the State Board. It's Tom's committee, right? So I guess, and if there isn't a downside, I don't see why jamming ourselves up on a time like that, especially when his committee is saying they might need 60 more days.
So I'm wondering, though, why wouldn't we require a deadline for application at least?
Because I don't see the advantage, I don't see the advantage.
You would know what's in the pipeline.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think that's a huge advantage.
The downside to requiring a deadline for application, when this really was supposed to go away in July.
That it might not, that it might not happen. And then the consequences are on the schools, not on the agencies. So I'm just trying to prevent the worst case scenario by, by adding two months to a timeline.
There's a gap.
And it may not be, it may not be necessary, but it might be necessary.
Fair, I mean, even though everyone's known that 7,000 is sunsetting and that.
We haven't had a process.
Exactly.
So we've got a process now, and I'm just thinking.
I do think I need to, sort of, somebody needs to notify all the agencies that are on that list that that's happening, if they still exist. Because they would know. How would they know?
We have the chairman of the group asking for that from us. I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't just, we would, why were we even questioning it? We should just do it. I mean, he's someone who's going to be in his committee, and I think.
So December 1, Tom, is that what you're thinking? And then, and you don't feel it's necessary to have that?
I don't think so.
I'm fine with Tom's.
Or Tom may say, I don't want to be chairman of the committee anymore. I want you to be.
Or no, no. Tom, I think it's, I think if that suggestion improves sort of workflow, then that's, makes a lot of sense to us.
So Tom, did you want, you said 31 at first. You want 31 or 1?
No, I thought just for, by December.
By December 1?
Yeah.
Okay.
Add two months.
So as you were talking about this too, it occurred to me, if AISNI and NEAS, the two major entities that are the accrediting agencies right now, say, eh, we've decided we don't want to work with Vermont anymore, heaven forbid, which I doubt that they would. You, there is an emergency rulemaking process that I know the board rarely goes through, but other agencies like Human Services go through it all the time. And that is an accelerated process. And you would probably have a sense if you're going to make contact with them shortly, if that's even a remote possibility that you could get to December 2 and there aren't any, um, agencies that will be approved, or you're going to have a gap and you've discovered it really will be a problem. The emergency rulemaking process, I think, can take, you know, it doesn't take eight months, but it, it still can take a couple, I think, like eight weeks might be more.
Tom, I know you're closely connected with some of these. I mean, have you had informal conversations? Do we have any signals that they may not want to do this?
No.
Because that's a little bit concerning.
They were involved in the first round of this.
Yeah, I remember that.
And the criteria, we have closely years' model policies from NAAS, and so they have not said, they've said the opposite. They said they want to continue to work with Vermont.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Didn't know how likely that was.
And I think just, just to be clear, I don't know how many avail themselves of the accelerated process by virtue of their accreditation, which I know that they accredit public schools and independent schools and private schools and otherwise. So I think that, that even if that doomsday scenario happened, it just means now the agency does cite visits, and maybe we get more serious about whether or not we need to be approving schools where they're not getting public tuition. Because the accelerated process would go away, do we want to expend the resources to continue to do that? Because that is probably the biggest piece that goes away on an accelerated process rate, the site visit, because it's otherwise unnecessary by virtue of the accelerated accreditation.
Yeah.
So, I think.
Did we come to some agreement? Everybody feel comfortable with December 1? Just want to circle back and make sure we have consensus on that.
One other comment along the same lines. I'm on 2223.4 DE and F.
Okay, so this is the annual compliance assurance.
This is the assurance.
Point four.
Point 4D says that they should, schools show, submit the form electronically and can, can ask for an extension for unforeseen, um, or circumstances, unforeseen circumstances or circumstances beyond the school's control. So I assume that E is a school that totally fails to submit an assurance, like they don't send in anything. There's been no communication with the agency. Because I was, it occurred to me that this is pretty, this is pretty direct. This is pretty strong. That if they fail to submit, it's a prompt notification to a board, and then there's a formal hearing. If somehow the school has been in communication with the agency, but hasn't fully completed the assurance or is in discussion with the agency about getting technical assistance or something. I just want to make sure that E is only for schools that totally failed to submit a compliance assurance form and have not been in communication with the agency ahead of time. That's what E is trying to address. Because there's also the, on F, there's that online training and written guidance and technical assurance that makes me think that the intent is, there's this ongoing communication with schools and the agency from the time that the form is promulgated until the time it's due. I just want to make sure that that's the right.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that F requires the agency to make an affirmative connection with each school. What it requires is that their team develop, um, perhaps a brief, you know, three-minute video, this is the form. Maybe it's a YouTube video, this is the form, here's where you find it. Here's a one-pager on, you know, what this section means and what this is asking for. And that it's, they put the time into kind of like the FAQs, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they've confirmed that they have an email address that works and that the school's received.
So that's, I'm looking at F, last sentence.
Yep.
That there had been, that's where there was some comfort, that there had been communication with the school.
So we should probably clarify that then, because I don't think that, I think that this could be read, read to say, notice above, we had said notice was that they send an email and post it on their website.
Right.
So if you want to make sure that all the independent schools have been, that notice has been confirmed.
Tom, I think that there's a responsibility in an approved independent school, if they want to remain approved, that they have given us contact information. And it's also available on the AOE's website. And there's a personal responsibility for maintaining an approval that if the agency has done its, to the contact information provided to the agency, they have sent this information. I'm not understanding what else would be necessary.
I just wanted to make sure that the, the individual email that was sent was actually going to get to the school.
Again, if there's a timing expectation of it coming, like if you were head, you were going to know that this annual assurance is happening every year. We should see it by January 15th, or whatever the dates are. I forget what they are now. But that's sort of like on your work calendar, like filing a 990 is whatever date that is. And it's important to maintaining approval and thus maintaining access to public tuition, or not, even if not, if the approval is important to you, you want to, it, the first year may be clunkier, but we talked, when we were talking about this in committee, about the unforeseen circumstance. Like the, the terrible accident of the person who's responsible for it on their way to work, or the, a fire, something unforeseen. Not getting an email because the agency hasn't been informed of an email update, or because somehow the AOE is in your spam, I think is the responsibility of the independent school to know this is coming. And I, I don't know why I didn't get it yet. Let me call the AOE. To add a burden to the AOE to have to do something other than send their email notification to the, what they have on file is.
I was just thinking the first year exactly was what I was thinking. The first year is where, because after that, you've got your, you've got your packet. You've got your, your information to show compliance.
Well, maybe, again, I, I think there's a personal responsibility to it. In theory, these should have already happened. And, and I think, so I think, I, I feel like we're asking the AOE to do their job in it and that.
What are you proposing as a change? I think I'm losing track.
So I was just saying, this is the way I read the rule, that there is, that it's, it's not a gotcha situation. It's not like, wait, let's wait, let's wait, let's see who turns it in, and you're, you're a day late, or you're six hours late. And so now we're going to notify the board. Whereas within, probably, really, by the time they notify the board and we have our meeting, all the missing paperwork that was missing will probably be submitted. So.
It has to be some sort of escape or off-ramp.
So I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm reading it that there is, that there is plenty of opportunity for communication, the way that it's written, and that it's not a got, that's the way I'm reading it, and I just wanted to make sure that I was.
And Sarah, do you feel as if that?
I will say, at least for year 1, I think there is an instance where it could happen that an approved school could receive an email that isn't actually delivered to the right address, or there is some problem, especially year 1, because I think Kim makes a good point. Once it's predictable, it's predictable. But it is a little bit high stakes in saying, where we changed it and said, they, you notify the school and you notify the board, because even though they can remedy it within maybe 12 hours, they will never be able to say that a report hasn't been made, that they were at one time for 12 hours out of compliance. And so if that's the problem you're trying to avoid by giving them the opportunity to say, holy cow, we totally missed that email, we'll get it to, you know, by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. Either do it on a regular basis, or at least for the first time, make sure that you've affirmed that by, you know, the first cycle, you've got, I don't know, confirmation receipt or something like that.
The only reason I make this, this assumption is because my experience with Pat Palace and Deb Ormsby is that they have that ongoing, that their, their team has that kind of communication. And I'm just assuming that that's the case, and that we're not writing this in a, well, we're waiting to, to point the finger.
So what language would we need to add?
I think if you just said, um, all independent schools shall be notified, and, um, or down here, we say that the, the agency shall confirm receipt of notification.
Yep, I think we could do that. And I'm also wondering if, at the end of E, where it says, if it determines that the school has failed to comply with the requirements of the section, like what I'm looking for is the opposite of good cause, like there's no good cause. That that should be the standard. It shouldn't just be failure. I think that's a little bit, um, I, I worry that that is too rigid and that it might be, it might create too narrow of analysis about, you know, whether a school has failed to comply. What does that mean? I mean, if it's two hours late, well, it failed. But, you know, is there room there for the board to say, yes, but, you know, they've demonstrated good cause, or they've submitted the form, you know, it was two hours late, but they submitted the form? So can we, can we build in a little, I like the idea, Zoe had the same idea, about, you know, having confirmation of notice to the school, but also I think if we somehow soften the language so it's not like a strict liability, if they failed to get it in on that certain deadline.
That's what I hear as well. And I think any language around that would be helpful, because relying on people who are currently in the positions, they might not be in the positions in two years, right? Like, like we have excellent people who are building relationships with the field and will reach out and do, from experience, we know that will happen. But if it's not kind of documented as a practice, not left up to people to do that. If that's being done, then it would actually, we wouldn't have to soften that language. By the time it becomes here, right, like.
Yeah.
I'm not sure even if I'm reading the right section where they have to like, so if the independent school, let's pretend it's not year 1. Maybe we can fix that year 1 problem next. But if the approved independent school has received the notice, they don't complete the thing, the agency has to make outbound phone calls or first-class mail regarding the deficiency?
Yeah, the reason we changed that was because the, the conversation that you had about, uh, Monday about this was the scenario where the email either went into spam or went to a headmaster that's not there anymore. And so to say that they were just going to send another email doesn't solve the problem. Instead, it would be contacting it by phone or first-class mail to ensure notice. But above, you'll see that, if you go up to, I think it's in B? Yeah, so in B, the agency yeah, shall know, shall provide, make the form available to independent schools by direct email and by posting on the agency website, which is, you know, the notice. And so that's why, if they don't get anything, you know, it turns 5 o'clock, they've missed the deadline, then they're going to con, the way it stands is they contact the school and contact the board, tell both of them they're out of compliance. Assuming best intent with the school, they hurry up, try to come into compliance. They've got a little tarnish on their record. But presumably, the board, if, if we change particularly what Jennifer just noted here, would say, if, if that's what you want to do.
Scroll a little bit.
Yep. Right down here.
Yeah.
Then the board would say, how did you want, what was the standard that you wanted, if it determines that the school?
Well, I was, I'm thinking out loud, but, you know, there, there needs to be a lack of good cause.
Okay, okay, without.
You know, that we would deter, that the standard for finding that a school has failed to comply with the requirements should be that there's no good cause shown.
Without a showing of good cause?
Yeah. Yeah.
So basically now, all you've said is that the agency, nothing changes, they, they send, um, the form out to schools 30 days before. In year 1, they publish the guidance, right? But they send, whether it's, they decide to adhere to the default January 15th deadline for sending out the form with a February 15th deadline for receiving the form. This section gives the agency the authority to change that, because we, we did hear from them that we think January 15th will be fine, but things may change, and it may just make more sense for the agency to say, let's do this process in April. And so we've all agreed, fine, but we want to make sure there's a 30-day gap between when you send out the form and announced when it's due, and there's 30 days.
Where did we give the agency the option to not do it till April?
We said up here that, um, the agency shall prepare, in B, there shall prepare and make available a simplified electronic form to be used to meet the requirements. And it shall be posted on the agency website by no later than January 1. shall be posted on the agency website by no later than January 15 of each year, and at least 30 days before the date it's due.
So that's where...
I don't see where that is offering April as a choice.
So, they have to put, they have to put, the default is that it's no later than April 15?
Yep.
Sorry, you're right. Now I see why you're confused, that it went in the opposite direction. So maybe the next year, just for example...
Maybe they do it December 15.
Yeah.
Okay. We were pretty intentional to keep it early in the year, so that the LEAs and the families would know if their school will continue to receive tuition.
You're right.
There's a couple of things to think about here. One, schools already have to report attendance in October, it might, not that you can tell the LEAs what to do, but that might be, that's an annual reporting requirement already. The other thing is that you don't want to go to, if there's a 30-day lag time, if you choose May, and maybe even April, really small day schools, they don't have a lot of people there during the summer. And so that, that would be...
Like, they're no later than January 15.
I like the January 15.
Yep, I like that October.
And I like the October date, too.
It aligns. As a person who works at small independent school, I mean, if you know that was the whole thing that goes in October, it goes in October.
So this gives them the flexibility not to be stuck at January 15, but it says, "No way I'm in January 15."
You're right, okay. I knew there was flexibility, for example, when the April direction... As I would say, this is my third day, I appreciate the flexibility to make sure that we're just aligning this with the right timeline that makes sense, so.
Yep. So now, what will happen is, agency sends that out, they will confirm receipt, and maybe it's click here, you know, maybe it's an outlook, you can do...
Read receipt.
Read receipt, yeah.
Return receipt requested.
So it's not, it's not like you have to send by certified mail.
Certified mail.
But they have to confirm that it's going to be there, and then also, the other backup is that, after providing an opportunity for hearing, the only thing you haven't changed here, though, is that there could be a situation where they've confirmed receipt, headmaster's kicked out, nobody knows anything about it, unintentional, the school gets a mark on its, you know, a black mark, because it didn't make the deadline, because the person was gone, but that's a very remote situation, and it may be one that you're completely comfortable with.
Wouldn't that fall under a showing of good cause?
It would, but you still wouldn't be, so that would be fine, but, and that's in the hearing context, Jennifer, that's when you would say, "We're not going to do anything, you're fine." But if a school is ever asked, "Were you ever reported to be in violation of the rules?" They technically were, because you still have them on day one saying, "You're now in violation, we're telling the board, they're going to offer you a hearing." You have a lot of protections in place before that.
I think we have a lot of protections.
So probably remote.
I think so, too, and I think D also would give an opportunity for the secretary to allow them to submit the form on an alternate date. So I think we've given every loophole that we could possibly give, and I think that I want to make sure we haven't, haven't taken, required the agency to take on responsibility, that should be the responsibility of the independent school who wishes to remain approved.
And along those lines, it also occurred to me, as board chair of a small independent school, that there's a lot of talk about administrative load on the public school system, and we have just layered a ton of administrative load on an independent school that maybe has one administrator. And just, so we're conscious that we did it. I appreciate the flexibility, because that's the reality on the ground.
Well, it doesn't seem as if we've set up an gotcha situation. That's what we don't want to do.
That's what we don't want.
Not so. We do want a compliance process, right? So, you know.
Were there any other changes, or...
Anything else, is that last sentence reads oddly?
Okay.
The last one with the...
We go right back to it.
Because I think it says, whatever it said...
Without the cause one?
It said, "Confirm twice." "The agency shall confirm receipt that all approved independent schools have received notice." It's like a weird sentence. Does that sound weird to anybody else, or is it just me?
She'll confirm that, all approved independent schools have received notice?
Yep.
Are we ready for a vote?
I have one more thing, sorry. Page 47. It's number 422724.
Jennifer, can you say, I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Page 47.
What number rule is that?
2227.4.
No, 22, 2272.
72.
Oh, boy.
2272?
Yes. Okay.
Kindergarten?
Yeah.
Could we just put engaging with parents and family of children rather than dealing?
I agree with you. However, we did have a little talk about the pre-K rules. The jurisdiction for promulgating the pre-K rules is with the Agency of Education and the DCF.
Right.
They fall in these rules, but we, but the board can't change them.
But this is kindergarten, it says.
Yeah, pre-K.
The district and teachers in the kindergarten are qualified, and under C-4, it says dealing. I think, which, I think the suggestion is...
Suggestion is engaging rather than dealing.
I agree with you.
But there's a need for, rather than the negative.
I have no problem changing it with, except I have one legal reservation. I haven't researched whether or not this particular provision is under your authority to change. My guess is that, my guess is that it is. What I would perhaps ask is, if we could change it, and then in your vote, I could research, and if it's, if for some reason you don't have the authority to do it, can we change it back so that we don't get in a snag in Elkar? Okay.
Got it. Then we should figure out who has it and why it's sitting in our rules if we can't navigate it, because I noticed it late in the process, too, and it left that particular word, but this, throughout the document, we have reference to sort of the vein of Act I language, and that is absent in the kindergarten section. And so, we just discovered that, and we said we didn't know whether or not we could touch it, and so we left it, but I think that word is pretty offensive, so.
So let me, it's called the Department of Labor and Industry, which I think was changed in 1991.
Uh-huh.
I just noticed here. We call them daycare facilities here, and I believe we take care of children and not days.
So if there are those corrections that can be made, I think we should, in that section, can we make the motion with that?
Yes.
Opportunity for Sarah to clean that up the best we can.
So Sarah has to deal with it.
I think if we were going to navigate that section a little differently, we might have, to the extent we could, you know, have it have some of the same tone of the other sections, and we didn't, so. Too late for that one.
Good rule, not a perfect rule.
I don't know if this is updated either, is it Agency of Human Services, Child Development Division? I mean, is it DCF?
I think it's, well, I think Child Development Division is under DCF now, yeah, so it's, the division is under the department. But I will check, I'm just a little hesitant about touching things that... Yeah, okay, I'll at least highlight that one.
I have it noted. And let me just double-check, is this also entitled Rule Series 2200 Clean Final Version, without a, like a version number?
Sure, how about, we'll call this one, so that when you refer to it, I will call this Final Rule V2.
Final Rule V2?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus amendments from...
Yeah.
Proposed amendments.
Maureen's going to have fun with it, now I'll send it to you later. Okay, are we ready? Okay, I hereby move that the Vermont State Board of Education approve Rule Series 2200 Final Rule Version 2, as further amended at today's meeting, to include proposed amendments to reconcile language options version 2, as noted in paragraphs 1, 5, and 6, and subject to legal counsel's research as to whether we have the authority to change the wording of Section 2272 to be filed with the Secretary of State as its final version.
My second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, may I ask you to do a roll call, Maureen?
Yes.
Richard Warner?
Hi.
Lyle Deppson?
Yes.
Yes, in the affirmative. All right. I further move that the Vermont State Board of Education delegate to the Rule Series 2200 Committee Chair the authority to work with Attorney Buxton to file finalized updates to Rule Series 2200, to incorporate any changes made to Rule Series 2200 Final Rule Version 2, as further amended to include proposed amendments to reconcile language options version 2, as noted in paragraphs 1, 5, and 6, and subject to legal counsel's research as to whether we have the authority to change the wording of Section 2272, and, hang on, sorry, and also including the authority to make any non-substantive edits to produce the final proofread draft, file the rules and other required forms and documents with the Secretary of State, and the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, and appear with Attorney Buxton on behalf of the board before Elkar at a date to be determined. All right, any further discussion? We have a roll call again?
Debbie Colby?
Yes.
Jessica O'Farrell?
Yes.
Richard Warner?
Yes.
Lyle still there? Debbie Morning-Labb?
Yes.
Yes, in the affirmative.
We have Lyle back, so he may be trying to...
Debbie Colby?
Do I have to say it again?
Okay. All right, thank you all very much.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
How come that was a two-part motion with you to work and me to do that on the...
I was just noticing we didn't do the second part for...
22.
Okay, so, and you do need to do the second part for EQS. Can we go, so I'm going to just, in the interest of clarity, we have finished off Agenda Item G, we are going to go back to Agenda Item F, because we have the second motion that needs to be read.
Emily Simmons, to that point, since we're going back to the Rule Series 2000, Emily Simmons has had an opportunity to do more of a crosswalk, and has some recommendations on two amendments that would not require us to do open the role for DQS, if you want to explore that.
Okay.
I'd like to ask that, because we had a guest speaker coming, and we're now, like, 20 minutes past his start time, and I'd like to see if we could maybe then table that, if we're going to have more information, and let him do his presentation first, since he's here.
Okay with you guys?
Just fine.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, we're going to table Agenda Item F, we will come back to it after, I would say, yes, after the presentation. So this is the presentation on District Effort to Prevent Harassment, Hazing, and Bullying, and to Promote Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I do need to excuse myself, I'm so sorry.
How about we, while they set up, how about we take a five-minute break while they set up?
Is that okay?
So, thank you again for coming. So, Anna Roth, Wayne Kaminsky, and we're here just to really show you what we've been doing this past year. So Anna's going to start us out.
Sure. So we are currently in year two of a four-year agreement with the Department of Justice. I'm sure most of you know the agreement came after an investigation that the Department of Justice completed regarding complaints of race-based harassment here at Twin Valley Middle High. So, some parts of the agreement are already done. There were policy revisions that needed to be made. We have the same policies that come from the AOE that are used across the state, but we have added things to them upon the request of the Department of Justice, which I was speaking with Zoe a little bit about, has implications for the rest of the state, because it implies that those additions should probably be made best practice for all schools in the state. They were some around requiring that supportive measures be offered to all complainants, regardless of whether or not we substantiate a violation, and then also specifying that conduct need not be directed overtly at a complainant in order for the behavior to be based on or motivated by their real or perceived protected category. So those policy revisions were adopted by our board, written by our legal counsel, and adopted by our board already. The next part of the agreement is assessment of our climate annually. Last year, we engaged in climate surveys of our school community, that included all of our students, staff, and family members, and then we analyzed the data from those to determine our training for the spring. This year, we engaged in listening sessions, those were facilitated by the Collaborative for Educational Services, which is an organization out of Massachusetts that we've been partnering with. That included listening sessions with staff and cross-sections of students, in addition to an anonymous input form on our school website for family and community input. And then, as I said, the results from climate assessments are used to determine the theme of our spring training, which needs, has to be provided per the agreement for both staff and students. The Department of Justice identified our first spring training, which was to be on the impacts of race-based harassment and other derogatory language. And then the final part of the agreement is monitoring and reporting. So we report to the Department of Justice some data mid-year, and at the end of the year, a full report on all of the sections of the report, and our actions to meet the parts of the report. So, again, we're in year two. Last year, in year one, we did our spring training with the Collaborative for Educational Services. We work specifically with a part of their organization called the Joy and Justice Team. They have been doing leading equity work with our administrative team at the SU level, and then also with me and my administrative team here at Twin Valley Middle High School, and then they have been providing all of the professional development that we've been doing around equity, diversity, and inclusion with staff, and helping us plan for work with students. Specific topics in our training last year included bridging and breaking, othering and belonging, and exploring social identity. We also, last year, developed a Jedi team, that's an SU-wide initiative that, again, was facilitated by the Collaborative. And then we continued our partnership with Up for Learning, an Vermont organization that many of you are probably familiar with. We are in, I believe, year three with them to facilitate a youth-adult partnership, a small group of students and staff, with the ongoing focus of making our school a more welcoming and inclusive place. And then, we also did listening sessions with just our staff last spring to get a deeper sense of climate. They looked at themes, those of respect and communication, discipline and vision, and those, again, were facilitated by the Collaborative, and they provided us with feedback. So that was all the work we did last year, and then at the end of last school year, we created the position of the Twin Valley Director of Climate, Belonging, and Inclusion.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
All right, so this is a little bit about the work that we have been doing this year. So, we were very fortunate to find Wayne and hire him at the end of last school year, and he came on and started working in earnest at the end of July at the BPA Summer Leadership Academy. Also, before the school year started, with the support of the Collaborative, again, we created a Bias Incident Response Team. That is a group of administrators and teachers looking at our bias response protocols at the school level, just thinking about how we respond in the moment, supporting teachers in how they respond in the moment to bias incidents, and how we can increase students and staff comfortability with reporting incidents that happen. We continued with the Jedi work at the SU level. Last week, we had a full-day Jedi retreat, which was a really wonderful time. Again, that's still facilitated by the Collaborative. We're continuing our youth-adult partnership with Up For Learning. We have our last retreat with them in a couple of weeks. And, again, as part of our agreement, we did listening sessions with staff and students in this past January, with all of our staff and a cross-section of our students. We tried to represent various different grade levels. And then based on the feedback from those listening sessions, we actually had a follow-up listening session with only female students because we have noticed there is a numbers disparity, for sure, between males and female identifying students in our school. We have a significantly higher proportion of male identifying students than female identifying students, and we're just noticing ways that that's playing out in the classroom. So we wanted to speak with the females, to find out what that looks like and feels like for them, so that we can start addressing those concerns and helping them find their voices in the school.
Yeah, so some of my specific work, is okay if I look this way, is working actually between the two schools. So I'm a Twin Valley School District employee. So I work with PECA down at the elementary school, and I work here. Most of my time is here, and I've split myself into doing two different things. So at the elementary school, it's more staff-focused, and here, it's more student-focused. So some of the work that I've been doing at the elementary school is professional development around equity topics, social justice topics, whether that's microaggressions, identity work, who am I, looking at power, who has power when it comes to identity, and then looking at gender as well, too. We've had about 10 one-hour Wednesday PD sessions so far, just specifically focusing on identity. I am in constant contact with the Collaborative. While I'm working at the elementary school, the Collaborative, like Anna was saying, they provide the professional development here at the middle high school. They also are on-call if we need any assistance, and it's great having them working with us. And I just happen to have a longer relationship that goes through WCSU, working with the same folks, so it's really nice having them. Part of it is student education, so if we want students to be aware of hazing, harassing, and bullying, we want to make sure that they know what hazing, harassing, and bullying is, and what are the implications, and why this is so important, not only from a legal perspective, but also from a social perspective. As Anna brought up, we've started an incident response team, letting students know. And one of the things that we did this year was be able to make it so that students can anonymously or also report themselves. And that's gonna be starting soon through a Google Form, so that a student doesn't have to go to an adult in order to report a harmful incident. They can actually just report it through a Google Form. Also, the plan is by May 31st, we're gonna have a belonging summit here where we're gonna bring in some outside facilitators. We're also gonna do some inside work as well, too, with some of our teachers and actually some of our students. And so I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So that's, I'm really looking forward to that, it's coming together. I'll be honest, I'm a little anxious, but I'm like, we're gonna do it, May 31st. We've also implemented restorative practices, training. I've done a fair amount of training down at the elementary school, so not only are we doing equity work, we're doing restorative practices. And the approach that PECA and I have taken is to start at the staff level. So we are not, my training is not to instantly say, this is how you implement restorative practices in the classroom, there is elements of that, but it's been all about us setting up restorative practices for ourselves. We have identified values, we've had hard conversations. It is now a tool that the community can use to be able to talk about hard things, and hard things are coming up quite a bit. So that's, and it also helps teachers to know what it feels like, and it also gives them practice before they enter the classroom. So that's something that we did this year, it's starting to move into the classroom, but that'll be the future work that we do, is to move it from the staff level to the student level. I facilitate harm repair circles here for students and staff, so if there's any conflict, student conflict, I follow up with the potential of a harm repair circle with those students. It's never, it's not a forced, it's a support. I'm not gonna put two students who are not ready to resolve their conflict in the same room, or I may not even have students even in the same room, I might be the go-to person. And like I said, it's also been between staff and students. And so that's been something that we've added this year as well. Just to say that, like, harm does not go away, you don't get over it. It may be lessened, but it can add up. And for some of our high school students, sometimes when I'm talking to them, they're like, you did this in third grade to me. If you're already entering the classroom saying, you did this in third grade to me, you're already at a level that conflict could actually rise again. So we're unpacking years of harm that's happened. So that's been really, I think, very helpful and important. We started weekly all-school assemblies that are completely student-led. So I meet with the students, there's a script. Teachers and students can send an act, as we say, and about 25 minutes, it's in the gym, it's a time to share information. So yesterday, I was like, I wanna let you know that the Agency of Education is coming here tomorrow. So if there's people walking around, that's who it is.
You were talking.
Yes! Exactly. But it's like, it's a way to be able to share important information. It's a way to highlight student, you know, student projects, so a woodworking project, you know, a classroom project, things like that. It's also a time to have fun. So we also try to add a game or something like that to it as well. And for our competitive students, that is the best time of the all-school assembly. So that's been really great. We've changed the way in which middle school stu- Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot easier. We've changed the way in which students get support when they need to go to the office. You know, there's times where students are in a place where they need additional support, and that's how I'm seeing it. If you could also say it as sent to the office, or saying, you're being provided with additional support. And what that looks like is that everyone in the office, Anna, vice principal, counselors, and the reason why we have so many people is we don't want somebody to come down, sit in the office, and sit there. That's embarrassing. We want them to be able to have somebody who's ready to be able to help start processing, potentially processing, a situation, and that's what we call it. We don't call it a what did you do, we call it what was the situation? And we're doing that because it's best practices, and it's also acknowledging that there's probably a lot that went on before that situation happened. We want to honor that. Yes, a situation happened, and so we ask them, what was the situation? When they have calmed their body and they're in a rational place, which we all need to do as adults as well, we ask, what was the situation? How did this happen? What were you feeling at the time? Did your feelings impact the situation? And how can we make this right? And so that is a tool that students can use, that teachers can use, and it's really trying to acknowledge that things, conflicts are going to happen, and there's a lot more to the story. It's not just a you did this, here's your punishment. Teachers, and I want to commend the school board, because when you have, when you have a school board that's supporting social justice initiatives, it makes it easier to be able to talk about and to bring in social justice curriculum into your classroom, which is the reality. And so teachers this year are bringing in more social justice-themed curriculum, whether it's the book that they decide to read, but they are taking on racism, they are taking on, you know, homophobia, they are taking on classism, they are bringing that into their classroom. And then last but not least is, I think the most important piece to this work is students. I am not 16-years-old anymore. I do not live a 16-year-old life, I don't want to. That being said, that is their generation, that is their life, and I love being part of it, and I love their music, and I hear it, but if this is going to work and it's going to move the dial and we are gonna collaboratively come together, it has to come from the students. And so that's the part that I think is really important. When Anna brought up the listening sessions, we specifically had the girls in a listening session because we wanted their voice, and through that, we made some changes. We have the youth-adult partnership. Through their voices, they are making changes. One of the projects they came up with is to go to elementary school and do a children's book on a social justice topic and do an activity with them. For the girls, it was like, we appreciate and we know how important it is to have all-gender bathrooms in our school, and we also want girls and boys-specific bathrooms as well. That's an easy fix, and it was such a big deal to them, and it was so easy for us to just make some signs to put on the door. So like, simple things that are easy for us to do are very big, important, a daily thing for students. So being able to empower them, to be able to hear their voices, hear what they're going through, what they're experiencing, their culture, and bringing that to the center, and then just guiding them, I think, is really the most important thing. And that's what we're doing. So the last thing I want to say is, a lot of times, my mother will ask me, what do I do? And I'm like, what? Or somebody else, I'm like, so I've tried to like narrow it down, and, oh, thank you, I don't have to move it here. Conflict, and you're like, oh, conflict, oh, conflict. I'm trying to, we're trying to, we're all trying to hear go, conflict, yes! Because conflict can be a good thing. It's actually a vital, like, you probably are in conflict today. Like, I feel this, or I feel that, like, but what we're trying to do in many ways is conflict is seen as like two people are in disagreement and somebody must win. And what we're trying to do is, all the work that we're doing around professional development, all the work that we're doing with students, is trying to give them, and hopefully giving them, more information about each other, so that they may not end up in a conflict if they understand where somebody else is coming from. Or if they end up in a conflict, they might have a better perspective of where that person might be coming from. So that when you enter a conflict, you're not saying, I wanna win or lose, I have a conflict, I have something to say, and at the end of it, I want us to be better. There's a problem, I want us to be better. And then the final thing is that there is conflict that leads to harm. We know that. Can we do that better? And that's through restorative practices, I believe, that through restorative practices we can do, we can help the harm that's happened. And I think it's vitally important, not only for kindergartners who are wrestling over a swing, or 12th graders that are really grappling with, like, and had some serious things, or adults who are 65, 70, you know, like, it really is, and in many ways, we have teachers and people in our community that are doing it, but just haven't even really defined it, but we want to do it well. And so that's why I brought up conflict, is like, my job is about conflict. It really is, and how can we do it in a way that doesn't hurt our communities? If it does, we have support, but how can it help our communities to be a better and healthier place? So that's what we've been up to, okay? So, it's your turn, you can ask questions, answers, thoughts, go for it.
I like this idea of centering on conflict and sort of flipping it into the glass half-full. It's a good one. Appreciate that perspective. You know, one of the things we did today is, and we still have to finish it, finish it, is with the EQS, right? And at the heart of that is a lot of the things you're just talking about here. I'm curious, you know, to what extent do you see the EQS as, you know, what will be the new EQS as a document that helps you in your work? Is it touchstoney work? Because that's one of the things, like, we spent so much time on this, right? And is it just out here, or do you know, are there connections that you're already making to that? I'm curious about that.
There, I mean, there's tons of connections.
Yeah.
I think what's great about the EQS is it doesn't say the common core state standards. It goes beyond that. And I think this is what this work is. This is about community, this is about working together, this is about collaboration. I've been doing this for a little while. When I first started, it was the 21st, you know, 21st century learning expecta- like, we, you know, so I think you're right. I think the one thing that, you know, I haven't, I haven't looked at the EQS in a little while through this lens, and thank you for bringing that up, but I'm curious to see what that crosswalk would look like, because as I see it right now in our society, this is a challenge for us. We're not doing conflict very well. You know, we sort of like do a tiny bit, and then we jump back to like where we feel comfortable. And it's not really helping us, it's actually hurting us. It's hurting us as communities, it's fracturing families, and so this is something, yeah, I'd like to look at that again and see what that crosswalk might look like.
Thank you for your presentation and all the work you're doing. I'm just wondering if you have kind of like next steps around taking the work and working with parents, too, and what, or maybe you've done some of that, kind of what's the connection that you've seen between the in-school, out-of-school, community-based work?
Yeah, so, you know, what we know is that schools are really a microcosm of the communities that they're in, right? So we, there's so much work that we can do in the six hours a day that we have, our students and our staff are here to help them learn and grow, and then there's also the other hours of the day that they spend in their community and with their families, right? So there is certainly a piece of that community and parent education that would be helpful to moving us along in this process. You know, we do collect input from our parents to try to get a sense of how they feel the school is doing in our equity, diversity, and inclusion work. But I think that would be a natural next step, is to start offering some parent education. We have to offer food and childcare, those are the things that kept people here, but I think that would be really a natural next step.
Yeah, and I think we're already doing it just in small pieces right now. So getting back to the student support forums for middle schoolers, that's sent home to family members. And the reason why we send it home, and we did some work before that, we sent home a letter, we gave parents a fan-up, is that we wanted, we wanted family members to know what was happening at school. Sometimes what goes home is not always 100% accurate, right? So we wanted to get ahead of that, and that's okay, I mean, that's understandable, like, I hold some things for my wife. So like, there's, that's, but like, being able to have that story and to know that it's being followed up at school, and then hopefully seeing that, like, we're listening to your child, and we're also trying to make it right for them and help support them. It's not just a, you spoke out of turn, you said something mean to somebody else, therefore you're staying after school with us. It's that, yes, there is accountability, but there's also this way of being able to make it right. So we are doing it in these small, little pieces, but you're right, I think the next step is really bringing it to, really informing the community as to what we're doing.
I'm curious, you're in year two of this four-year plan. Can you talk about changes that you're already seeing in terms of, like, what do the classrooms feel like, how do the hallways feel? Like, what improvements or changes have you noticed?
Yeah, so I would say the information that we have about that comes directly from our students, because that was part of the listening sessions, and we did still do a climate survey this year, we do one every year, just not as part of meeting our agreement, so we just did it more recently. And both of those things show that students do feel a difference in the way that kids are treating each other. On last year's climate assessment, one of the indicators results that really concerned me was that a large majority of students said that kids here are not kind to one another. And, you know, being kind to one another is really at the basis of avoiding conflict and people feeling welcome and a sense of belonging, so we, the youth-adult partnership really worked on that, and we as a staff have worked on that a lot, of just helping kids be kind to one another, and a lot of that comes to understanding one another better. So students have definitely expressed that it feels different in the hallways and in the classrooms. the classrooms. There is still definitely room for improvement, but, and teachers as well would say, it feels different and more positive already this year, only in year two. So, for me, that feels hopeful and that we can continue to make improvement over time, and even when we're done with the agreement, continue to do this work, because it's what's best for our community.
Are you seeing any, is there a correlation between, you know, this and student performance, grades, student outcomes? Because I could imagine if a student didn't feel safe in a classroom, that would negatively affect their learning.
Yeah, if they don't feel safe, they're often not here, right? So, their absenteeism is higher. You have, we, we like to say, "You have to Maslow before you Bloom," right? You have to have your basic needs met, which includes emotional safety, before you can even begin to think about analyzing a test or solving a math problem, right? So, if you're not feeling safe, no, you're not going to perform at your best. Have we specifically looked at students who knew were struggling and their grades? I haven't looked at that specifically, but I would guess if I did, there would be a correlation.
I'd just like to add that, you know, the work that I'm doing at the elementary school is going to work. You know, like, this is not a, this is not a middle-high school focus. This is a preschool-through-12th-grade focus. And so, I would say that the implementators for restorative practices for teachers, that is, I think that's been a real positive. And just also, me being part of both schools has allowed a lot more communication between the two different schools. And I think that can only just benefit the district as a whole. So, yeah, I think it's still early, but we both are feeling really hopeful.
I'm wondering, have you felt pushback? These can be difficult, obvious conversations, and even shifts in culture. And I'm wondering how you've experienced that and how you've had to deal with it.
Yeah, so, I would say that there's been slight pushback. A lot of the pushback has more to do, in my opinion, more to do with the challenge of learning and changing and unpacking your biases. That challenge and somebody's skill set are just, you know, the challenge is really high and the skill set might not be quite there yet. So, then we lead to anxiety, which then has people go, "Wait a minute here." And we've had an open conversations about that at the elementary school. So, how I describe it is like, let's take small steps up this mountain. Let's not take leaps. Let's be really thoughtful and mindful about our message. And I think, I wanted to take that approach coming in. I think we've taken that approach, that like, what is, what's the learning that's going to really push people into that learning zone, but not push them to that anxiety zone? I think if we push really hard and demanded changes, I think we would see a lot more pushback. That being said, if you have those conversations about what we're trying to do, because what we're really doing is, we're really getting down to people's values. And if we can root it in people's values, I know that people want kids to feel safer. I know that they want to be kind. And if we can have those conversations on how, now, the how might be a little different, but if we can have those conversations with our core values in mind, it's a much better place to start from.
Sort of go slow to go fast?
Yeah.
Mode that must feel safe to learn and grow together, where I can imagine it feeling safe for your folks.
They're pretty good at telling us. Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, right. I think it's about recognizing that not everybody's in the same place in their readiness to learn about these things, and so, just meeting them where they are and respecting their boundaries. And some people are ready to learn more than others.
Thank you, first of all, for sharing how you're engaging in this really important and difficult work. You've started to answer some of my questions, which are, you know, really, what are the factors of success in this work? You've talked about the importance of pacing, right, and that being critical. You've talked about your continuous improvement. So, just interested, as you've gone through this now for two years, what you think are really, you know, critical success factors and, you know, like, creating a common lexicon? Is that one of them? And what structures, you know, there's just kind of those big picture pieces I'd be interested to learn about.
I mean, so, the hopes and dreams, like, the idea that if I saw something, I'd be like, "Yes." That students are holding their own harm repair circles. That there's really good, there's a conflict, and students are coming in to help support each other. That we get petitions on our desks about things that students want, or they would probably demand. We demand that. When we start seeing a lot of those, we're going to be happy about it. We're going to go through the process of it. That teachers feel comfortable talking about social justice topics, that we have a good, solid understanding, so that we can, we can understand a student's identity that may be different from ours. I think, like, those are starting to see, and also, too, like, I'd also want to see a lot more smiles, you know? So, you know, and again, I think it's rooted in that student empowerment. It's rooted in, like, them being able to take leadership, and for us to be able to be there, supported, knowledgeable enough to be able to be there for them in those moments in time.
I'd like to kind of document some of those inputs, right, of the conditions of success that you're bringing in. So, it'd be interesting to learn as you continue. Sorry?
The reporter's trying to quote you, and he couldn't hear you.
Oh. I would just say, it'd be wonderful to be able to document some of the conditions that are being put into place to support this work, as you think about, you know, replicating if other schools might be interested in doing similar practices.
Yeah, I would say, in terms of supporting the work, having the support of our board has been huge, because they, you know, not only supported adding the position, which in, for a small school with a small budget, to add a position is a big deal. So, for the board to support adding the position to really facilitate this work and move it forward was huge in our work. And then, I would say next, like, the openness of our staff, because the teachers and staff here, a lot of them live in the community and/or have been here for a really long time and are invested in the success of the district and in the emotional safety and well-being of the students. And when they recognize that this work is what's best for our whole school community, they're willing to invest in the work. And so, their openness to it also has helped to move it forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about the work. It is really important and challenging, but we're committed to it and feel really hopeful and glad to speak about it. So, thank you.
And I just, I really want to echo that. I know that, you know, what brought you to that place was probably a difficult path, but it's really encouraging to hear the steps that you're taking. And, you know, I often say to my kids, "There's no such thing as a bad experience, as long as you learn from it." I mean, I'm not sure that's a completely true statement, because I'm sure there were people who were hurt along the way that, but my point is, is that you're really sort of taking this and turning it into a very positive experience and being very thoughtful about it. And I do think it would be a really good, you know, role model for other districts across the state to really look at the work that you guys are doing and think how they could replicate it. Thank you.
Right? Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right. Shall we revisit item F? Are we ready to do that? Although, where did Sarah go? She was just here.
She was just here. She just went that way.
Okay.
She knew you were coming to her.
She bailed.
Unless we want to pick up item J. I don't know if Emily is with us.
Is, I believe Emily is still on the line.
Although, you need to leave.
We need to finish this.
Is your girl sitting on the curb?
Not yet. I think what would be helpful, so, we're going to return to the EQS. My understanding is the agency might have some additional feedback with respect to alignment with the DQS.
Correct. Yeah, there were two points for a requested amendment that would align with the DQS.
Do we have, do we have those amendments in writing, so the board can see them? I don't see anything in my email.
Hold on, let me just.
It's just hard to process this stuff on the fly.
Sarah did send an email to the board with that attachment.
And I think she sent the attachment. But she did do a clean version or something.
Clean version, but I don't know. Is Emily prepared to make a presentation to the board, so we can understand what those amendments are?
Emily, if you could come on the line to share the recommendations regarding those two amendments? Thank you.
Wait, hold on, because we can't hear you. Help is on the way.
See the language? I don't see, I need them. Yes, please.
Try again.
Sarah sent us a new version of the doc. She just.
Yeah, but I just don't see where it is.
Try one more time.
It's green as you slide through. It's just the prior to the date. It was not.
There she is.
So, we've gone back to item F, Sarah.
Which one?
Item F, EQS.
Is that me? Okay. So, I emailed you all an updated draft?
Okay. Are you able to project it up there? Just, oh, I guess everyone does have technology of some sort.
And I, you have two drafts. You have the one with the updates that Emily provided, and then you also have, while the last speakers are presenting, I updated the amendments as well.
What amendments?
The ones that we.
That we already have.
Yep.
We already have.
So, that way.
Document. I'm sorry, it's clean.
So, if we look at version two, is that the one that we're?
Three. Version three.
Which one has the ones that are being proposed by AOE? Version two or version three?
Two was just Emily's, and then I realized I had a few minutes to put in.
So, if we look at version two, we can see specific, I'm just trying to pull those two apart, because there's a lot of agreement here. So, I see under 2120.5, adding sort of prior to today's date, a renumbering reference. Is that correct? And I see the same thing under 2120.7. Those were the two renumberings?
Correct.
And is there anything else? That's it, right?
It's just really hard to do this on the fly.
Yeah, so, if those two are the only things that make sense, I thought that I heard you mention in the ladies' line, the ladies' room, that there may be a section under graduation requirements that would require more attention and.
That's my understanding, and Emily can expand, but we'll need to review that further, just to ensure that there are not substantive changes.
So, this is not everything? These are, okay.
No, these are just two amendments that we can move forward with now. Still do need to review.
Okay, so, here's some, for clarification, as I understand it, let me, sometimes I need to put things in my M-words, which is, the agency has identified two, and I'm going to label "quick fixes" that will help with some of the misalignment between the EQS and the DQS that resulted from some of the structural changes we made to the document. There are two of them in here, and they're labeled in green, and they just, they are primarily dealing with section numbering. There may also be some substantive work that needs to be done for alignment, but we are not addressing that right now, that that'd be a later conversation. Later conversation.
Correct.
We're not doing that on the fly.
That's right. We don't want to do substantive changes on the fly.
That's right. So, there, those two changes, I have no problem with those. I don't know if anybody else. How do other people feel with those two minor additions?
I'm still trying to find them, because I'm scrolling through the rules.
Sure. 2120.5 and 2120.7, both have navigational language.
Okay.
And with respect to those other changes, because I just, I think it's probably important for us to know as a committee that we got suggestions for change, like, a handful of hours before our last committee, scheduled committee meeting, which was April 1st. So, we got it, like, that middle of the day for our afternoon meeting or that morning, something to that effect. And we actually then took time so that we could consider the AOE feedback and incorporated those pieces that we thought we could do at the following meeting, which was April 10th. So, these more substantive changes that you might anticipate at another time are going to happen within DQS? Or, I mean, we do not anticipate reopening EQS anytime soon. So, Emily, what is it that you are anticipating might be cause for attention at this point?
What is in the DQS that might determine to make another change? Because your changes have combined to graduation requirement section. So, you have added elements related to statewide graduation requirements, mostly around special education. That may or may not make sense to monitor through the district quality standards process, because the agency has separate monitoring processes for special education. But we're not determining any effect of it. It's just the nature of the questions we'll have to answer for ourselves down the road with the DQS.
But Emily, just to clarify, so that would be, the agency's request for amendments at this time to the EQS would be these two sort of referencing language with respect to dates? Any future alignment would have to happen on the DQS side at a later date? I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Okay, great.
And if those rules are reopened for that purpose, we would have the opportunity to, as Hannah and I did last time around, suggest that perhaps we line it up so that districts are reporting annually in one format. So, anyway, when you reopen them, we will make sure we're paying attention.
Was there any other discussion around the agency's?
The only other thing I would suggest is, for instance, in 2120.5, where, and I'm going back up to it again, we have the language that says, you know, parenthetically, "Prior to April 17, 2024," numbered as 2121.5. I would suggest we also go, and I think there is no longer a 2121.5, but I think we should sort of close that loop and note 2121.5 after April 17, 2024.
Became 2120.5.
Correct. So that if a school goes to 2121.5, they will be directed to the correct current rule number. And similarly.
Does that make sense, Sarah?
2120.
I agree with that. We're just, we're just making sure the direction.
Close the loop.
And go with what's.
Yeah. And the same with 2120.7. We would have to put a parenthetical under 2120.6, saying after April 17, 2024, this is now 2120.7.
Does anyone else have any concerns with that? Sarah, can we assume that?
Didn't their motion earlier allow for that to be done anyways?
Well, it might be helpful to clarify on this, since this is an amendment coming in from the agency, and this is something we didn't discuss before, so.
But you're right, we did discuss renumbering.
Could we just hear what the motion we passed earlier is? Because all this may have been covered.
Motion that we read before was moved that the Vermont State Board of Education approved Rule Series 2000 version, it was a different version then, as further amended at today's meeting to be filed with Secretary of State in its final revision.
And, you're right.
No, that's all we did before.
Yeah, it was, and to include. It was, and to include proposed amendments to...
Yeah. Sections 1, 3, 4, 6, and 7.
Correct.
So it did not include that?
I thought there was a part at the end of it.
I thought there was a sentence that said you can collaborate with the coaches.
Right. But so who takes the official motion?
It's the second motion.
Can we hear what it was?
Probably poor Maureen.
The motion that I read was...
Because we're clear as mud.
Moved that the Vermont State Board of Education approved Rule Series 2000 version. At that point, it was clean, final underscore clean, as further amended at today's meeting to include the changes in to...
The amendment to reconcile language options.
Version 2, Sections 1, 3, 4, 6, and 7, to be filed with the Secretary of State as its final version. That's the motion that I read previously.
And that's the notes that I have as well.
Okay. Because I thought we sent something about that the people could go ahead and look at the, you know, make any minor corrections.
That was actually for 2200.
Okay.
We need to make that. We need to do that second motion for 2000?
Yeah.
We just haven't done that yet.
So I think we should probably rescind the motion and then...
The first motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you allowed to do that?
I don't think we have to do that.
We already voted that we probably have.
We've already voted. We've moved on to another topic.
You can rescind.
Another topic.
But we've changed it since we voted. So I think in order to...
I don't think we rescind it. Wouldn't we just adopt this one instead of the other one?
I was going to make a second motion that added this in.
You're the procedural person.
No, I just, she's the attorney who's going to fight it in court when we get sued.
Especially as simple as passing EQS is, right? Oh, my gosh.
No, I just, I do know from, you know, the moderator stuff is, once a motion's been made, you move on, and you, another motion's on the floor, you can't go back and, you know, that motion is done.
That's why I'm saying I would make another motion.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could just make another motion to approve.
That's what I was going to do. I was going to make another motion to approve with these edits.
Okay.
Right? And then the second motion to send it to LCAR.
Sarah's reading really quick.
Sarah, we already didn't vote to send it to LCAR anyway, so.
Nope.
Thank goodness we didn't do the second motion.
Well, no, we knew AOE was looking at it, so.
Caught me. I think my memory is that there are many ways, in RORs Rules of Order, to accomplish something. My memory, though, is that you can go back and revoke a prior action within the meeting if you want to more cleanly redo it. I think you can also go forward and present your new amendment.
I think for the record, it would be easier now, especially since, Sarah, you have created a new version 3 that actually has all these amendments from 1, 3, 4, 6. My recommendation is that we actually take a motion that has, for that document, that now has everything in it so that we're not referencing proposed amendment version, all these pieces in place.
And I think in your motion, you should also say, instead of the previous...
I was going to say, like, in replacement or replacing version, whatever it was.
Because I wouldn't want it to be confusing which, because we wouldn't want to approve two motions.
Probably the LCAR, right? They need to see the minutes of this, or they need to see our motion and approval record of what we're taking, I think.
But somebody was saying something over there. I don't know if that was the AOE attorney or...
I don't think so. I think it was a...
Feedback?
Yeah.
All right. With that, I would like to do the following.
Sarah, are we good?
I'm sorry. Where were you?
Tammy was about to leave a new motion.
Well, you want to do a new motion? Okay.
Yep. I'd like to move that the Vermont State Board of Education approved Rule Series 2000 version, making sure I got the version correct, its version, final rule, clean V3.
To vote. Excuse me? It just says to vote. I don't know if that's the title.
As further amended at today's meeting and revising the earlier version that was voted upon to be filed with the Secretary of State as its final version.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Maureen, could you do a roll call?
Yes. Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Kim Gleason? Richard Warner?
I'd like to make a second motion. I move that the Vermont State Board of Education delegate to the Rule Series 2000 Committee co-chairs the authority to work with Attorney Buxton to finalize updates to the Rule Series 2000 to incorporate any changes made to version 3, clean, final version 3, as further amended at today's meeting and replacing the earlier version, including the authority to make any non-substantive edits to produce the final proofread draft, file the rules and other required forms and documents with the Secretary of State and the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, otherwise known as LCAR, and appear with Attorney Buxton on behalf of the board before LCAR had a date to be determined.
Kim.
Any discussion?
So the co-chairs, is the chair and the co-chairs, or just the co-chairs?
Said co-chairs to, oh, for this Rule Series, we are required to attend, and I think Jennifer may choose to attend, right? I think this is requiring us to attend. Jennifer did come with us last time when we did ICAR.
But I think to Tom's point, are you wondering if I will have the authority to work with them to help finalize Rule Series 2000?
That's my question.
Yeah. I would take that as a friendly amendment if you guys are good with that.
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
That would now read, move Vermont State Board of Education to alter the Rule Series 2000 Committee co-chairs and the Chair of the State Board of Education the authority to work with Attorney Buxton to finalize updates, and then sort of the same language as what we had before.
And I seconded that friendly amendment, friendly, whatever it was.
Any further discussion? Okay. Maureen, could you do a roll call, please?
Well, real quick, are we voting on the amendment? Are we voting on the whole thing? Because there was a motion made, and then we had a friendly amendment.
Is that actually voted on?
I mean, I don't know because, again, it's, we're not a small board, and also, it's a pretty important thing.
That's why I reread the motion with the amendment.
But, okay. I'm good.
I'm not a procedure, I am not an expert on procedures, so.
Yeah.
Would you like...
I don't know. I would defer again to the person that's going to defend it in court.
So friendly amendment, vote on the friendly amendment, and then vote on the full motion.
That's what I was asking.
All right. So we're voting on the friendly amendment first.
Which is to add Jennifer, along with the co-chairs, to do the things that were said.
Okay.
You got it. Can we do it without a roll call?
Sure. Right? If it's unanimous. I think if it's not unanimous...
No, because according to the Secretary of State's office, if you're in a hybrid meeting, you're supposed to do a roll call.
Got it.
Remember, that was brought up back when the other commissioner was here.
Okay. Roll call it is.
It's just my thoughts again. You can disagree with me.
Yeah. You're fine, Rich.
Aye.
He got mad at me.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Jen O'Farrell?
Yes.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay. And now we are voting on the motion.
The amended motion.
The amended motion.
Tammy Colby?
Yes.
Jen O'Farrell?
Yes.
Tom Lovett?
Yes.
Kim Gleason?
Yes.
Lyle Johnson?
Yes.
Richard Warner?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
All right.
This is a comment I wouldn't care if we were voting on, you know, to buy somebody a hand.
No, I appreciate it. And this is important, and this is why we have a diverse board with lots of strikes, and I am thankful to your procedural expertise.
Okay. So this brings us to item J, which is the Otter Valley Unified Union School Board waiver request per 16 VSA Section 719 and process. And I see that Emily is with us here. I had asked Emily to look into this. I received a request from, I believe it was Otter Valley Unified Union School District Board, requesting that we change the default configuration of their representation on the supervisory union. And I asked Emily if she would be able to work with the parties and have the agency come to us with a recommendation. So Emily, thank you very much for your help, and I will turn it to you to let us know where we are and what you recommend for next steps.
Exactly. So we provided written recommendation also explains the fact on the controlling law. So I recommend everybody follow along on that Secretary's recommended action document. Everybody have a copy of that handy?
Yes.
Okay. So I think as Jennifer, supervisor union boards have representation from each member's district. The membership is determined by law and depends on whether a school district operates any schools or not. In the case of school districts operating schools, laws that each member board will be directors on the SU. In the case of a tuition-only district, the third one. The law prior to 2021 required there to be a supervisory union or less to the state board to consider any waiver to default amendments. And that was changed in act 166 of 2021 as many districts found it difficult to resolve those problems without consensus at the supervisory union board. They were stuck. They couldn't go to the state. So relatively new law opens up a pathway to use this word from any member district, the supervisory union, to make this request. So what we have is a request from one member of the Northern Supervisory Union. And that supervisory union made up of two unions, first, and Otter Valley. And in this case, you have the request from Otter Valley. I summarize the provision here, request, our recommendation. The motivation they say about their request is that the Barstow School District represents a larger population and all of their student population and the Barstow School District. So it feels it should represented accordingly on the supervisory union. Stopping there, it occurs to me that the request doesn't articulate a number of seats for each district on the SU board that they're requesting. It's just open-ended. We want something different. I've provided some enrollment data for you in the written recommendation to demonstrate that there is a size difference here. And so that doesn't derive any open question. Open question is, will the board entertain changing the default requirements to something else? And in the agency's view, will the member boards propose something else or at least come back to the state board with some ideas about what would be preferable, if anything? Rather than having the state board come up with on its own a presentation in terms of numbers from each district that would be appropriate? I think that's kind of hard to impose with the information that's in front of you now.
Basically, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding or saying back for, because... So the request came from Otter Valley, and we've only heard from them. We have not heard from the other school district in the supervisory union, which is Barstow Unified, nor have we heard from the supervisory union that oversees both school districts, correct?
Correct. But today, you have chaired all three of those boards present, meeting, I notice.
And maybe this is a question for those three, although I think one person might be wearing two hats, if I remember correctly. Have those three entities had a conversation? And have they reached any sort of agreement?
I'll have you ask that to them in a moment.
Can you repeat the question? I'm happy to answer. This is Maureen for Trancom OBUU and RCAR, you two boards as chair.
Welcome. So, and Emily, were you done? I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was done with the presentation. I didn't know if there were other questions about the controlling law that they needed to hear before we plunge forward.
Does anyone have questions about controlling law? Okay. Okay. So the question that I had posed was whether, you know, we've got three entities. We've got the supervisory union and the two school districts. And I'm just wondering if those three entities have had a conversation and if they have a recommendation for the board.
So I can tell you that, sorry, it seems to be feedback. So when I hear that, it makes things wonky here. But so the OBUU board is the only board that has had a conversation around this. That is correct.
Okay.
And neither is RNESU, which I thought that the question should have gone to them first.
Is it possible, if we postpone consideration of this matter for another month, that the school district and the supervisory union could talk, you know, both within their own groups, but, you know, between each other and come back to the board? Either with a recommendation, which I think would be, you know, the best-case scenario, or if there are multiple scenarios that you could say, you know, this is the scenario, and here's the justification for it, and then here's a different alternative, and here's the justification for that. My concern is, personally, I don't feel like the board has enough information to make a decision today other than if we just went on the raw data of how many students are in each district.
Right. I completely agree with you. So, yes, we have a board meeting tonight, although we would not discuss it tonight because it won't have had time to be warned. But we would have a meeting in mid-May where we could have that discussion on the RNESU board, which would also give BUU time to discuss it amongst their own board as well.
Okay. And does that sound okay with Barstow?
It sounds fine. Can I ask a question, Jennifer?
Sure.
I was just looking at the recommended action, which is, looks like it's, one, to acknowledge that we recognize the size differential, and, two, to essentially sort of codify by vote that they have those conversations and consider a recommendation that they would bring back to us. Would it, rather than tabling, be beneficial for us to take that vote now, which then gives them the sort of requirement and authority, if you will, to have those conversations? I have a sense that if it came to us, it may have been having difficulty having its time in their SU for the conversation without the mandate. Emily, is that sort of in line with what the secretary's recommendation was saying? Take, you know, recognize both these things?
It is. The emphasis is that we think there should be some consideration locally first. But we thought that, given the size differential, it is appropriate at this point to indicate, yes, there is a size differential. So we don't give all the work back to the locals to start totally from scratch and acknowledge that element of the OBUU request.
Can I just ask one question before you do that? So this is a hotly contested issue, not only within OBUU, even though it was approved. So, and there were not as many board members at that meeting as I would have liked. So before you make that decision to approve the fact that, yes, OBUU is bigger, I would much prefer to go back to the both boards and have this discussion, to be completely honest.
I was just concerned that if it was coming to us, that it may not have had the opportunity for...there may have been a reason why you weren't able to have that conversation locally, so just thought our action might give foundation for that, but whatever. I mean, it sounds like you're rescinding...are you rescinding the request, then? I don't really know what the right language is.
So, this request came out of the blue at OVUU, and so there were only seven board members there when it was decided. And it was right at the end of the...just before the end of our current year, where board members were going off and new board members were coming on. I just feel like it needs to be a deeper discussion at OVUU as far as if we really want to do this. I know it's before you guys now, but I would...you can approve the fact that, yes, we are bigger. We know that already. I just think that OVUU really needs to determine whether or not this is the right path moving forward, as it could cause potential disharmony with our other member districts, who we have not had any problems with up until this point.
And Emily, I'll just ask you if you have any thoughts about this proposal.
I think the secretary's recommended action, you could vote on one and not the other. That's very doable, or acknowledge that it says should consider the board, doesn't tie anything with stands either way. Just whatever is best for you.
Would we maybe want to amend number two to say they come back to us if there is...rather than...we're presuming they're going to come back with an alternate structure.
Do we need to take any action?
I guess that's my...I think that's...what I'm hearing from the locality is they'd like a little bit more time to see if there's a resolution there, rather than us being sort of top-down or heavy-handed about requiring a conversation and potentially escalating something. So, perhaps we just don't take any action on this, but we could table it until our next meeting and see, but with the expectation that we hear something back.
What? How about...I mean, I would be inclined to say we won't take any action today, and if you guys want to come back before the board, that you could contact us and ask to be put on the agenda. Because that's easy enough.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily want to give you guys a deadline if you're in the middle of negotiations and things are moving, or...I think we're here to help you if we...if you need help, but if you don't, thank you, then I'm happy to let you guys continue working things out amongst...
I'm sure they're going to need help, because there is one board member who is adamant
that this needs to happen. So, I don't want to like...I would like a deadline, just so that we come back and we can tell you either it's great or it's not great. But I just didn't want you to vote on something that you might not necessarily need to vote on today. I think we...
I was just going to say, why don't we can tell them when our next board meeting is, and they need to...they need to adjust their schedule, because if they're meeting tonight, they're meeting after this meeting...
And it hasn't been warned.
What?
Like, they're meeting tonight, but they can't talk...
No, no. What I'm saying is, though, so they'll need to know, because if their regular board meetings are this night, and our meeting is during the day again, you know, they're putting it off another month, so just...
She said they have another meeting before our next meeting.
So, well, our next meeting is May 15th, and after that, it's June 19th.
They don't care.
She's looking at our calendar.
Yeah.
I think that's the question.
Also, I don't see how one board member can force that.
So, would it be helpful for you guys to have a deadline? Our next...our May board meeting will be May 15th, and our June board meeting will be June 19th. So, if one of those dates seems better than the other for us to give a deadline...
The June 19th would be better, because I think our next RNESU board meeting would be May 15th as well in the evening. So, the June meeting would be great.
And does that work for Barstow?
That does work well for us as well. Thank you.
So, at this point, I'm, again, I'm looking at the green sheet, the secretary's recommended action. Are we just voting on the second recommended action? And we will, you know, update that to June? Is that...is that a correct statement that we don't...we're not taking action on the first recommended action?
I didn't think we were taking any action. I thought we were going...I thought their request was...
Table it.
Table it until June.
Oh, so we...
I would like that they wanted a deadline.
Yeah. Don't we need to move to give them a deadline?
But this says that they...we want them to consider an alternative, right? And they're not sure they want an alternative.
I know. I think what I was suggesting is we just did number one.
We're going to take it back up in June.
Okay.
We're going to take it back up in June.
Great. Okay. So, and let me just say, in the interest of like full transparency, if our meeting is June 19th, we have to post the agenda by Friday, June 14th. So, if you want to be included on the agenda for our June board meeting, we would need to know before Friday, June 14th.
And then, a question for Emily, then, this request, is that considered withdrawn? So, this is in, like, we don't have to deal with it, or what do we do?
No, I wouldn't say that the request is withdrawn, but I would point to 716 as a may for state board action, not a shall. So, you're not required to take action on this at this time forever.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and good luck, and we will look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Okay. So, this takes us to future meeting planning, and I just want to point out, I was just notified that there was supposed to be a dress rehearsal in here, starting about 25 minutes ago. So, with my apologies, I'm really sorry that we are...we've overstayed our time here. We will try to be as efficient as we can going through the last part of our meeting. So, with regard to future meeting planning, I have a couple of notes from Maureen. Some of them are kind of connected together. One is, do we want to take a month off this summer? And I don't think we have to absolutely decide, but I think what might be helpful is if we took a straw poll and said, if we took a month off, would we want to take off the month of July or the month of August?
July.
Darn. That was not my answer.
How much is it worth to you? I could change my votes.
Okay. Okay. So, any other...that was one half of the...
It was there.
Any strong preference, one way or the other? Okay. Okay. So, if we take a month off, we will be taking off the month of July. And then, that is a to-be-determined, just, you know, because who knows what's going to land on our schedule of things to do.
Is a June meeting scheduled?
June 19th.
Okay. Now, it's a holiday. I don't know. It is.
It is?
June 19th.
Oh, yes, it is. Yeah. Yeah.
So, I don't know.
We probably should reschedule it.
We do it like the day before or something?
Well, and if we take off July, then maybe we just want to have it on June 26th. Although, I think my sister's...
Except you're going into graduations and...
Let's do a doodle poll on like rescheduling. We don't need to do that now.
Acknowledge that it's a conflict with the holiday, and we will...
But thank you. Okay. Teacher of the Year presentations will either be in July or August, just as an FYI. The other thing I was going to mention, and I will include a link in the minutes, but I just want to remind everyone that we are looking for a new student member, because Aleah will be transitioning off, Gray will be moving up to senior student member, and what I can say right now, and I will include the link, but interested students can go to the vermont.gov careers page, and there is a link under Boards and Commissions, Appointments, and a, you know, little spot that says, "Apply Now." So, it's actually pretty user-friendly, but if you all know of any students who might be interested, definitely pass the word.
So, that process is officially open, and then they can start applying?
Yes. Yeah. And then, the only other thing that I had on my list for future meeting planning is we had had a discussion about a summer retreat. So, if we don't do July, that kind of puts the retreat in August. And if there are people who want to start thinking about that, planning it, not to name names, but I think Jenna had indicated that she might be interested in working on it...
Help plan.
Is the next meeting a live meeting, or is it a...
It's a live meeting.
Just for Tammy. More games, more...
More games.
It would have an interest. I won't put more names in here. Okay. Jenna can be a target.
Where's the next meeting?
The next meeting is at North Country. Is that where...
Yes. North Country is where Aleah is.
Yeah, where Aleah, so we'll be there.
And is it going to be a late start like this one?
Yes, because then that gives board members time to travel to get to the meeting, and so, I mean, we can talk about that, but my...what I've thought is that we give people time to get to the meeting, see the school, have some lunch, and then do an afternoon meeting.
I like the morning meetings. I would just throw that out, because then we don't run into things like this, or people have to pick up their kids.
It just gets hard if we start at 8:30, and people have to drive three hours to get there.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe we can start at like 9:30 or something, and try to be out by 2:00. And the only reason I'm throwing it out is, I mean, I don't...I've got 15 minutes. I'll be home by 4:00, 5:00. You guys won't even make the interstate by then. So, I just...and again, it's just a conversation, so I don't know. Poor Maureen, she's way on overtime.
Okay. Taking under advisement.
I'm not sure...I don't...we have any schools coming up for reapproval by that point? I don't know if you know that yet.
I don't know that answer. I'm sorry.
I don't know what...I don't know where that is. So, I can reach out and see, but that might be...
They would need to be that person.
Yeah. They're going through a desk...it probably wouldn't be for the May meeting anyways.
Okay. And I think June will be remote.
And can we request an update on the status of the desk audits and the current...
That's what Tom was just talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was reapproval. I didn't...I didn't...I only heard if they were reapproval. And then, I do think that we should just have the preliminary in advance of a retreat, like rules and responsibilities as they exist right now, and I promise, finally, we're done. So, I will finally actually just give that like a one-pager if I can, and then look at our rules and the last date they were updated for each of them, and what they're called, and why do we even have that one? No.
Okay.
For some of them, that may be the case.
Anything else? I do know, because North Country is one of the community school grant recipients, I had this idea that it would be...I would love to hear from them about what that has meant to them, what they like about it, if they think it's useful, if this is something that other school districts should consider. So, I'd like to include that on the agenda.
And then, Aleah might be able to update us on the SARS activities?
Yes. Yeah. I think that was the plan, that there would be...
Right.
Big update. All right. Anything else? Okay. That brings us to public to be heard. I don't know if we've...public left us.
They all went home to get dinner.
If there are any members of the public who are here with us...
Thank you very much. Be here.
Well, and I do want to just say, thank you very much to Twin Valley for hosting us today. The food was wonderful. The tour was awesome. It was really great to come and see it, and you guys are doing really, really good work.
Meet a couple celebrities.
I'm sorry about the last few minutes, but they got approached.
Yeah. Well, it's a good reason to have to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions?
Lyle's by the pool.
We stand in adjournment.